I'd like to call to order this meeting of the PBD City Council Finance Committee, sitting as the committee of the whole. For the record, present for the committee are all 11 councilors. This evening, we will resume deliberation with the remaining portion of the FY21 budget, which is education, item E on the agenda. In attendance to present and take questions from the committee is honor the mayor. We have several members of the school committee here, committee members Amico, Arnotis, Carpenter, Griffin Dunn, and Olympio. We have interim superintendent Dr. Kerbel, incoming superintendent Dr. Vidala, assistant superintendent Dr. Lord, business manager Mr. Scanlon. We also have here tonight, the auditor Ms. Martin and director of finance, Mr. Gingras. If I missed anyone, please know that that was inadvertent. All councilors should have in their possession a hard copy of the supporting detail of the PBD Public School FY21 budget. Under suspension of the rules, I would accept a motion under suspension of the rules to move to receive the supporting detail of the PBD Public School FY21 budget.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Counselors, you heard the motion from Councilor Rule. Roll call.
Counselors Welton.
Yes.
Sassla.
Yes.
Miss Sullis.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Jarrett.
Yes.
Danny Martin.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
O'Neal. O'Neal? Counselor O'Neal? Melville?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Ross Ignoff?
Yes.
Motion carries 10 to 0.
Mr. Mayor, if you could please proceed with your opening comments.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening, Council. Good evening to everyone. I greatly appreciate your patience. We ran a little late on the school committee meeting prior to this, so I appreciate everyone's patience this evening. I don't think I'm going to give a speech about where we find ourselves financially. I know we discussed that in detail on Tuesday, but certainly this has been like any other year. It's been like no other year that we've ever had, and I just wanted to say a couple of words and a couple of thank yous before we begin the presentation. And I want to just thank the team at the school administration, Dr. Kerbel, our superintendent, Chris Lord, our assistant superintendent, Carla Chiota, our special education director, Joe Scanlon, the business manager, and Steve Farrell, the personnel director, as well as principals, teachers across the board. This has been an extremely difficult process, and as we talked on Tuesday when we ran through the city departments, this is going to be a work in progress that I think is going to require a number of meetings over summer as we approach the school year set to begin in September. We got some information today from the state, but there's still a lot of unanswered questions and a lot of work ahead of us to reopen properly. So as we do that, I think the budget will be adjusted and there'll be some changes as these variables and this information comes to light, hopefully the sooner the better. But I did want to say a couple of words. First, I wanted to sincerely and truly thank Dr. Mark Kerbel. His last day is going to be next week, and he's really come in and made a huge difference here for the city of Peabody. I know he cares deeply for the city of Peabody. He was grew up here, a student here, taught here at the Kylie and the Higgins, and then had an exceptional career as an educator in numerous positions. But he came in after the tragic circumstances of Kara Mertag's passing, and he was the right person for us. He has a tremendous heart, credible background, really was the guiding force we needed at that time when we were having real difficulties as a school district. And I was so excited back in February, the beginning of March. Dr. Kerbel and his team had just an outstanding plan for us to make some necessary improvements, to invest in education in our city. We had the Student Opportunity Act, which was going to bring in some additional money that the governor had put forward. And really, I thought just what he had presented to us and what he was moving forward with, taking up a lot of the things that Kara Mertag spoke about and also bringing in his new ideas was really something special, and I was really excited about the direction of the schools and what he was bringing forward for us. Of course, things changed dramatically in March, and we had to shift into a whole new realm of work, and rather than making some additions that we think would have been terrific, we were in a position where we've had to make some difficult cuts and make some difficult decisions as to programs and positions and things. But Dr. Kerbel has just been a tremendous positive force for us under real trying circumstances. Certainly, he did not sign up for what ended up happening with this worldwide pandemic, but he really stepped up for us in a time of need, and I just wanted to show my appreciation to him and really just thank him for everything he did for us for these few months when the city has been going through some very trying circumstances. And so, thank you, Dr. Kerbel, for all your hard work.
Thank you, Mayor.
And I also wanted to thank Dr. Vidala. He's set to begin July 1st, but really, he's been working with us now for a few weeks. I think he's going to be a terrific addition to what we're doing here, and he's a Peabody resident. I think many of you have had the opportunity to meet him, but some of you probably haven't yet because of the circumstances. And he's a family man who's raising his kids here in Peabody. They're in the public school system. He's had a very distinguished career over in Revere and very happy to bring him over to the city of Peabody, but he's been working with Dr. Kerbel and his team now for several weeks, working on this budget, trying to come up with different alternatives and different options as we've navigated our way through things. So I just wanted to thank him. He's part of this. He'll probably be jumping in to help answer a number of questions, but really impressed with what he's been able to bring to the city already and looking forward to working with him in the future. So with that, I know Dr. Kerbel has a presentation to make. I'm here to answer any questions and help as best I can. School committee's been terrific, working through, again, these tough circumstances. I think all of us are hoping for better days ahead and hoping that the variables come back or the things come back in a positive way, and we can make some much-needed additions and improvements to this budget. So I wanted to thank the school committee as well. So, Dr. Kerbel, if it's okay with the chairman, Mr. McGinn, I'll turn it over to you for your presentation. Is that okay, Dr. Mr. McGinn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dr. Kerbel?
Thank you. I thank you, Mayor. Ben Cor for your kind words. I can only go south from here, right? I really appreciate it, and and I have to ask just one question. I grew up in Rowley Hill, so which one of you would be my ward councilor?
I think that would be Councilman Sassla.
Dr. Kerbel.
And we talked today, too.
We did.
We did. So, thank you. And one of you I coached, but I won't mention it. So I appreciate everything you've done for the city of Peabody, and I appreciate the school committee working with them for the last six months and developed a bond with some of you in a very short time. I'm grateful to be in Peabody. It was always something that I always wanted to do. I didn't think it was going to happen, and it happened unfortunately because of Kara, and I knew Kara, and I worked for Jack for eight years while I was a teacher with the Kylie School. So, given that, I'm going to ask Chris Lord for the slide presentation. I want to take the councilors through some things, and then Joe Joe Scanlon is going to take us through the budget pages. Going to start at the beginning, right, Chris? And so I have to tell you, you know, being in central office and being where my office is located, I have a true appreciation for first responders. That ambulance diamonds go on all day long, and they're a busy place. And I think my favorite is when the train cuts in right in the middle of the day. I think that's my favorite part of the day. So, given that, I want to present what I can to you, the FY21 school budget with my colleagues. They'll help me out. All right, next slide. Chris, so these are the folks. I appreciate the mayor was saying about each one of them. Chris Lord woke up one day after Thanksgiving, and he said, OMG, I am the superintendent, assistant superintendent, principal, and the assistant principal. So I want to thank him. Joe and Carla came in new, and we all learned together. Steve has been helping us out, and Josh has worked just as hard as anyone. Been in the weeds at this for a couple of months. So, when he hits the ground running, that was like when July 1st. I think that's going to be great. All right, next one. So, instead of, I have a mission statement and a vision statement, but I'm going to keep this one really simple. So, the current district attorney, the Peabody mayor, and the Peabody superintendent all went through the Peabody school system. So, next slide. The vision, next slide. Wouldn't it be great if we had more budgets, more Kerbels, more betting courts? That's what we want. We want everybody to reach their potential, and you can't do it on a shoestring budget, all right? So we're going to make this work for the year. And and still, I know there's great things still going to happen under Josh. So, the mayor talked about prior COVID and what our tensions were. We were really, we really had some good ideas and the money to back it up. Okay, expectations changed, so we had really three budgets as targets as we started thinking about things. We had a level service budget and a level funded budget, and then we really had to make adjustments because we worked with the city to move the custodians to the city side. You can take a look at our numbers. Just to have a level service budget would be great right now. Okay, next slide, Chris. So, and some of you may ask, what's a level service budget? I know you've been doing this for a long time, and you understand budgets, so excuse me if I just state some of the obvious. Okay, but we're taking what we're doing today, we rolled it into next year, and we add salary and contract adjustments, and usually it's around 4% or 5%, and that will be around $81 million. Next. And so, when we met, and we met quite often with Mike Gingras and the mayor and Beth O'Donnell, so I think we were open with each other, transparent. We had, what, six or seven meetings, Mayor? And those ended up being very fruitful. We talked about what we could do, what we can't do, and so we still have to recount for salary and contract adjustments, so that $81 million target is down to 77.3 million. And we still had to make one more adjustment, Chris, next slide. And that is for the custodians to move to the city budget. So you can take a look. Our target is 74.8 million, knowing that we don't have the custodians in our budget any longer. So what we did, next, Chris. What we did is work together at Central Office to meet this 74.8 million dollar target. Next. So these are some of the adjustments that we had to make. So one of the, I think what we did, we checked over and over and over the accuracy of the salaries, the accuracy of FY20, FY21, making sure the right people are in the right place, and we found inaccuracies, so we really worked hard to check those. School committee members were were helpful in terms of pointing out some things for us to look at, and we really appreciated that dialogue. We had a number of people that retired, and I want to thank the mayor for offering a retirement incentive because we realized those incentives will really help us. And then there were some adjustments. I've worked on budgets for 16, 17 years. We always looked at enrollment. Usually, it's the first thing you look at. Okay, we made some adjustments based upon the enrollment, and I'll just show you that later on. Some of the programs that we had to consolidate, some of our special education programs, we just had a public hearing, and one of the moms didn't like some of the moves we made, so the mayor was polite to talk about how we need to look at that. If we made some decisions, we're going to have to look at that over the summer, and that'll be up to Josh and his team. We also are working with Unit B to reorganize some positions. We transferred a lot of positions to the grants. We were fortunate to have money from FY19 to roll over to FY20, and then we used the remaining money for FY20 to roll over FY21, pay for our district tuitions and stuff like that. That helped freed up some of the grants, and we transferred people that we normally would lay off, okay, into those grants. Okay, and then after that, once the dust settles, now we're looking to see, based on seniority, who stays, who's the last man out, and we also have an impact of layoffs that we made earlier, so we're looking at that, trying to bring some people back. So we're very careful about what we're doing, and we're very conscientious of people's when people look at things, so we're trying to be helpful to people that we do lay off. All right, next slide, Chris. So they might typically question, these are questions that I had, and they ended up popping up, same questions came up at school committee meeting. How many people do we move to grants? How many positions were added or deleted in Unit A, Unit B, and Unit C? Okay, and how many people actually retired? So I'm going to go through those slides quickly, and then I'm going to go back to Joe Scanlon. All right, Chris, let's move on. So we have a number of grants, but we could move people into almost 40 people into these three grants, you know, kindergarten-powered professionals, a lot of people at the high school, okay, and then preschool-powered professionals into the special ed grants. Next slide. Before I go on to this, there are other grants that already had people salaries in there. We do not move people out, so we kept those. And then very quickly, there's sort of a trade-off in some cases. This is typical when you have lower enrollment in some grades at some schools and higher grades, I mean, in higher enrollment in others. You can take a look, Burke and Carroll versus center schools. The West School, we moved teachers out, same with the high school, same with high school, school adjustment counselors. And there were a couple of retirees. We didn't find those positions. We took those positions and converted those into vocational positions. So we worked hard to reorganize and make sense out of our budget. We took some people out for grant, the contractual services, and add them to the sped button, sped budget. So the net loss is 2.6 positions, and that's much better than when we started at 10 positions. So we feel much better about getting that number. Okay, Chris, let's move on. 2.6 teachers were, right now, are cut. Those positions are cut, two administrative positions are cut. We're still working on reorganizing some things around the district, so that may, at least one of those may change. And then about 20 teachers, 20 powered professionals that were deleted from the budget. Okay, with more money, probably bring those back. Have to take a look at our special ed programs carefully, make sure that we made the right decision. That will come over the weeks and months with Dr. Vidala and his team and the school committee. All right, next. 16 teachers and two powered professionals. I talked to most of them. I want to thank those. Some people committed like 30, 35 years to Peabody. I think it's fabulous. And I spoke to some of them, started with me, and good for them, that they were committed and gave that, gave their all for the city of Peabody for kids. We won't forget it. All right, next. And the school committee approved the budget number, knowing full well that over the weeks and months, we're going to have to have a lot of dialogue about line items and programs and stuff like that. So I appreciate their concern and dialogue with Josh. And so this is the number, and this is the number we hope you support. We know that you have questions. And I want to thank the mayor for mentioning Kara Mertag. Next slide. I think one of the things about Kara, and I knew her too, not as well as you folks. When I knew her, she was 10 years old, and then I came back for a review of the district. I was working for the state. I met her when she was the assistant superintendent, and this, I can't tell you. Everyone says it all the time, all year long. She is not forgotten. That's the impact that she's had on kids. And so, we just put this here just to remind us of what we're doing every day for every kid. All right, thank you. Let's let's, Chris, let's go to let's go to Joe, unless people have questions for me. Mayor Ben Cor.
Dr. Kerbel will go through the presentation here, and then we'll take the questions all at once.
Yep.
Mr. Scanlon?
Allison, I'm not sure that Mr. Scanlon has co-host rights to share his screen so he can bring up the budget book.
Dr. Cor, it doesn't have.
She'll do that for him, and it's already done.
Joe, you might be muted. Can't hear you.
Well, my question was to counter, McGinn, a protocol. If I'm asked a question, should I answer, or do the questions go through the chair?
Yeah, we're going to try to get through your entire presentation and then take questions at the end.
Okay, thank you. This is our budget presentation. It's similar to the one that you received last year. There's 29 pages. I'll scroll through slow, and then we can ask questions either by location, or you said hold them till the end. This is a summary of overall district. The chart at the top of why it's there is to give you an overall view of the enrollment and the percentage of the students that are special ed, high needs, economically disadvantaged, and we will look at that at each school. So it's an important factor in each school's budget. The box on below is the enrollment numbers, current for this year, and then projected for next year. And then we've added at the bottom the current enrollment of out-of-district students. Those are students who live in Peabody but attend schools, private parochial, so that's the overall number. That would include the Vo-Tech students in that number as well. So the next page is an overall view of the budget. Here's our budget number down here, the 74,008. There's an awful lot of red here. There's a lot of changes. There's a lot of FTE changes, and just the majority of those are moving to grants. Mark just covered those, and we can get into the specifics as we go through. The format pages is very similar, location, or at the school level, the accounts will be on the left side. Then you've got FY19, FY20, FY21. The two columns are the FTEs, full-time equivalent, the number of staff members, and then the budget spending. This is a situation where this appropriation ended in a credit state. Same for 20, and then 21 slightly shaded. Then what we're doing is we're comparing what our budget plan is for 21 to what the budget is for 20, and that's what this adjustment number is over here. So there's a subset of the staff budget. You can see that's where the majority of the red is there. And then what we refer to as the ordinary budget is the supply and service lines. The schools really don't have significant budgets in this area. A lot of these down here, these are transportation, would be the bus contracts and this, you know, transportation, central administration would be health benefits and those things. And those accounts are specific as we delve into each location. This is an overall school. This is Brown, number one counting system, so I'm going to zoom in and show a few other things. It's difficult to, we hear a lot that it's difficult to read, so I'm just going to make sure that I'm providing the information on the page itself. Every account has a row number. The first number is the accounting location. One is Brown, so every row starts with one. The accounts are detailed. They're broken up by salaries with a subtotal, and then what we call ordinary, which are the supplies and services. I'm sure you're familiar that this code in the middle of this account number is the key code for a school budget. This is all the education series, start with two. We have to report all the numbers at the end of the year and to the end of the year report, and that feeds through and becomes the foundation budget in the following year. So to back out a little bit, overall Brown, what we've done is we've reduced 11 positions. One in paraprofessional kindergarten, moving to a brand, seven in sped with some changes that have occurred. And then the custodians are moving to the city budget, so that's the majority of that. Up here, there's another large number decrease, which is the substitutes. What we were doing is putting all the substitute accounts in very few budgets. We've now have the correct accounting, these two codes over here, long-term subs and short-term subs. So you'll see that in every budget, a large decrease and then an increase. Those two numbers don't necessarily match because what we did is we leveled all the substitute budgets on an average of $151 per pupil. So some of the schools were overbudgeted, and then we've reduced them into fiscal year 21. So at the bottom of the page, what we've done is we've listed the grades, and we have the enrollment numbers, which is coming off of a master table that we have out of our SIMS, Student Information Management System. And then our number of teachers here is broken out by grade. I didn't mention every one of these sheets that you see, for Brown as an example, the school worksheet, there's four worksheets that are behind it. All the individual salaries are listed, individual employees from 20 and 21, and then a second set of sheets for all the supplies, the history of the purchases, even breaking down into details into the instructional materials that are bought. So I'll zoom back in and spend some time talking about these boxes down here. So our class sizes, by policy, grades K to 2 is 25, and grades 3 to 5, a maximum of 27. So these class sizes are, you know, reasonable here in Brown, and then projected forward, the enrollment is projected to increase, but with the same number of teachers, the class sizes do increase slightly, but it's still manageable. The way these are set up is that if the class sizes go over, we get a warning light. At the bottom here, just going through, each one of the schools you see has a high needs number. So Brown is slightly higher than the district, which is slightly higher than the state, economically disadvantaged, consistent through the district and the state, English language learners, consistent, and if Brown is unique, they have a little higher percentage of special education students. So spent a little bit more time with Brown, may not spend that much time on any one of the schools. We'll just keep scrolling through. I won't scroll too fast, so if you see anything, make a note, and we'll ask questions later. Burke is a little bit noticeable. There's more changes. There are some reductions in teachers. There are paraprofessionals moving to the grants and the custodians moving to the school, the city budget. I'll zoom in down below. You can see that there are changes with the enrollments. We are dropping a teacher so that the class sizes remain the same, but that has to do with the drop of enrollment, 254 to 237. I'm sure you're aware, I sometimes refer to enrollment as today's newspaper. It's always changing. There's people moving in, people moving out. The principals stay right on top of their enrollment. The school, Burke, is under high needs, a little bit lower in economically disabled, English language learners, special education is a little bit high. So moving on to the next one, Carol. Other normal changes, a position drop in kindergarten, reflecting a shifting of grades. A position drop in the general instruction, again, reflecting grade changes, paraprofessionals going to the grants, custodians going to the city. We'll zoom in a little bit at the bottom. Here's the enrollment numbers, 584 dropping down to 569, dropping down two teachers, but the class sizes are relatively okay. There are some higher class sizes, but obviously, we want to balance the activity and put the teachers where the classes are, so teachers may sometimes transfer between buildings. High needs is very high in Carol. Uh, we have a higher percentage of economically disabled, higher percentage of English language learners, and a little bit below state and district in special education. Zoom out, we'll move over to center. Center is um pretty level. Here's the negative here because of the change in the substitute accounts. Here's the paraprofessionals moving to the grants. Here is the custodians moving to the city. Most of this up here you see is step in grade. There are two teachers that were added to center. So we'll scroll down, look a little bit at the enrollment. There is an increase projected in the enrollment, so there's eighteen teachers projected to go up to twenty. So the class sizes still remain. The the key numbers are twenty-five and twenty-six. If they get above that, that's a concern. At the bottom, center school is high in high needs. Hi, a little bit high in economically, very high in English language learner and a little bit uh low district, below district average and student, special education students. McCarthy, uh a few adjustments within the reason of um retirements. When you see an example like this where there's no change in the FTE, but the salary has reduced, that's reflecting a retirement that is budgeted at a lower salary. Here's the changes for the substitutes. Here's the changes with the paraprofessionals going to the grants and the custodians, overall reduction of three. The FTEs and the classes, seventeen teachers, three hundred and seventy-eight. A slight uh decrease next year, but keeping the same number of uh teachers in. The class sizes will go down just slightly because the enrollment's projected to drop. And McCarthy has a uh higher percentage of high needs, average of economically disadvantaged, below average of English language learner and slightly higher in special education. I'm sure you're aware that McCarthy School has an integrated preschool program as well. And a lot of that activity, those funds are charged to a revolving fund. So there's more activity in Mc- McCarthy than is necessary reflected in the general fund budget. Still a few more elementary schools to go. This is South. You could see that uh minor changes up in here. This again is a salary. I'll zoom in. This is a salary adjustment. Nobody's getting a, you know, a cut in pay. It's shifting of staff around, same number of instructional. This is the change with the um the substitutes. Looks like they might end up with a little bit more than they had the year before. Here this pair is going to the grant. Here's the custodians going to the city. Scroll down to the bottom. Enrollment projected approximately the same with a slight increase, same number of teachers, eighteen. Overall, generally the same class sizes. High needs at South is a little bit below average, economically disadvantaged, a little bit below average, English language below, and then special education needs. Just zoom back out, go to Welch, one more elementary school after this one. This uh Welch, minor changes. Here's the adjustment with substitutes. Here's the paraprofessionals going to the grants, and here's the custodians going to the city. Again, this is normal, uh relatively normal step in grade activity that you see here. You know, these are obviously one individual, but in these accounts here, this type of activity is not one person. This is, you know, multiple people stepping grades. Overall reduction in FTEs and budget. Enrollment slight increase, four hundred and three to four hundred and seven. There is a preschool at Welch also. Um, the class sizes looking to have the same number of teachers, and then the class size is relatively the same. Failed to mention before, whenever we, the preschools that we have, though preschools are not in the general fund budget also. So we have activity in the preschools. The kids are part of the school, but they're very often the revolving funds are where the charges are. At Welch, the high need students is very high, economically advantage is very high, English language learners is very high, and special education slightly below average. So West is the last of the elementary schools, some minor adjustments uh with salaries, uh most likely having to do with transfers. Here's that new number again, which means that this is a retirement, so we're budgeting a lower salary. Here's the change with the substitutes. Um, a change in one uh teacher hours, percentage of hours is what that is. These changes here, special education, paraprofessionals and um custodians going to the grant. I've been through nine schools, eight schools. I might as well mention something else. In every school, uh the physical education is being zeroed out. We talk about this when we get to the athletic revolving fund. Physical education teachers travel from school to school and their budgets in each school are percentages. Very few schools have one phys ed teacher all day long. So what we found is that the percentages weren't keeping balance, so we've pulled them out, put them all together, and we ended up saving some money uh just by identifying percentages of where people were working. Down the bottom, zoom in, overall slight increase. Overall, same number of teachers, overall class sizes remain the same. High needs at West is slightly low, economically disadvantage is low, English language learner is low, and then special education is uh low as well. So those are the elementary schools. The Higgins Middle School, much larger school, but it also still fits on one sheet the way the elementary schools do. Uh, the biggest changes, we uh made a change in the uh suspension uh teacher position. Uh, we moved paraprofessionals to the grants. Uh, we took the um guidance, made the slight change. Uh, we did, we're trying to get uh the library para back in, so we've added a point five FTE and then the custodians moving to the city. Uh, we look at the information of the phys ed, the phys ed staff stays in Higgins and stays in the high school because they're there all day long. If we look at the numbers down below, it's a little bit kind, can kind be deceptive because obviously every growth that occurs in the elementary schools goes up into the middle school. It's been a strong, steady growth, and although this is showing a slight increase, it's potential that can be some, a little bit more significant than that. High need students consistent with district economically division, consistent, consistent, consistent. The high school is gonna go through two sheets, so what we do is we do the salaries up here and then the supplies. So we'll zoom in. There's a lot of change at the high school. There's a lot of decreases, increases, decreases. We're making a change in the way the deans and the assistant principal accounts are budgeted, so there's what we're doing there. We are increasing an English teacher, decreasing a reading teacher, increasing art, decreasing business, and in some of these incidents, those are the same people. They're just moving because they have different certifications. They're addressing the growth of where the students are coming in. Middle of the page, the substitute teachers, we're just the the uh drop and then increase those other two accounts. Paraprofessionals, uh a change in the attendance positions, same similar to the suspension position. And then this is a big one right here that jumps out. Uh, those are sixteen pairs that moved to the grant. These are employees that are still with the district. We just shifted their cost over into the IDEA grant. And then there's the custodians that moved over to uh the city budget. Just zoom in a hair. There were two accounts that we have um in this year's budget that we're making some changes to. The high school went through a accreditation for NEAS. I assume that you're familiar with that. In every high school, there is one year of planning, one year of uh the study, and then the following year is the the wind down of the study. So we don't need the large budget anymore, so what we've done is we've cut it that by thirty-five thousand. That will not go back into the budget until seven or eight years from now, when the high school has to go through accreditation again. This year, we had put in money into general instruction. We have thirty-five thousand that we had spent on instructional materials and textbooks. We made the decision to take it out, uh because the district has a number of capital accounts, capital funds that you have authorized us over the number of years. We still have some funds remaining in two different textbooks accounts, one for the district and one for the high school, so we're assuming uh we're gonna use the capital funds here, and then when we get to the end of the report, we reduce the technology budget, assuming that we're gonna be buying some technology needs with through the other capital fund. Uh, this is the end of the report. No increase, basically level funding. Overall, significant drop of thirty, but the majority of it is these uh pairs moving to the grants. Overall enrollment is a uh steady increase. We have uh over three percent going in, and again, whatever increase we have at the elementary schools, they're going straight up. We are gonna talk a little bit when we roll two uh sections, talk about vocational, uh doing some great things in that area, and it's connected to work in the high school. High needs is uh consistent economically, English language and sped are all consistent with the uh district average. So the PBD Learning Center is a standalone facility. I'm sure you're familiar with. Uh, there's the three individuals that work there, the uh Seth, the principal, and then the teachers. So he's made a slight adjustment to his budget because we're just looking, obviously, to trim where we need to trim, but he's able to operate fully in the next year. He is projecting some enrollment increases based on his uh history. So uh he has sixty-six and it's potential that can go up by a quarter. He has the space for it. He may need another teacher is the way that he puts it. This is an area that we're adding some staff to. Vocational is a very exciting, uh successful area. We've added the numbers this year. You can see that uh last year there were two hundred and ninety-one students involved in the vocational programs. And this year, there's three hundred and ninety-one. So we've had a one-third increase in this one year. We are adding uh two staff. We're moving one over from the high school and we're moving, um we're adding a a new position for criminal justice, which uh we have high expectations that program will be successful, maybe another hundred students in that one program. And it's also aimed at trying to keep students um uh necessarily from going to VOTEC if we're offering the positive programs here. This looks a little bit odd, but what we're doing is we're just adjusted the director's salary. Uh, she's down to a half time and we're just shifting. She has three funds, the general fund, the grant, and revolving fund, and we get chapter seventy-four money through vocational, so we're just shifting the cost and charging her salary into other funds. Few more departments. This is department that we have called curriculum development. This is one that we had set up where we uh when the SOA money had come in, we, this thing had increased by a one-point-two million, but obviously that pulled back. So all these accounts were added in anticipation of uh those funds coming in. If they do ever come back again, this is where we would end up putting them. So we're not able to add all these staff. Might as well talk about this line. This is one of the offsets. Uh, we made a couple changes into the offsets this year, and we'll talk about those primarily when we get down to the district office. Uh, the offsets are set up as a benefit to ensure the district is charging the revolving funds. I think historically, I, a number of years ago, we weren't utilizing the funds correctly. We were finishing the year with high balances, so the offsets were put in as a way of um addressing that issue. We're making a change in the counting methodology. The offsets themselves, we're honoring the complete dollar amount in fiscal twenty-one, three-point seven million and fiscal twenty this year, three-point-seven million. It's an accounting change, so that's why uh they're not being included in next year. So as we scroll down into uh performing arts, uh music, this is a very successful uh program. There's a lot of growth in this area too. Um, what we've done is just do step in grade. Uh, these are very um expansive activity. Uh, there's requests to expand and increase all of these budgets to, because participation has increased, but it's just not the year that we can afford to do that. So he has uh basically a level funded budget for next year. In athletics, there's uh some big changes here, but a lot of them are uh accounting. So the two big changes, starting at the top, as I've mentioned, is we moved all the phys ed uh salaries into the district, into this office, which is why it's showing that number. It's not truly representative because it's offsetting salaries that were decreased in the other schools. The user fees is an offset, so that's the second accounting change. We're not accounting directly into this account. What we're doing is we're going to be in directing, redirecting charges into the revolving fund. It balances out. I've been over this. Um, Mr. Gringas will verify that. Dean Rist or Mike. And then um at the bottom, what we've done is he's added activity. He did have increases in all the sports, however, the spring sports have a dramatic drop off because of the school closure. So athletics, just like performing arts, another area that has high growth to it. The special education budget has a number of uh specialists that are budgeted in this appropriation, number seventeen, but many of them, most of them obviously work in the schools. So some of the uh pro, some of these specialists, BCBAs and uh other activities, physical therapists, they may spend their whole day in one or two schools, but their salaries are charged to this appropriation. Overall, general step in grade, some minor changes in terms of staffing. This is one of the other offsets. We'll talk about this uh when we get down uh to the lower half of the page. One big change here is the legal fees. What happened was over the course of these two years, we generally had about a eighty to a hundred thousand of legal fees, but we were able to charge those to the IDEA grant. We cannot do that in twenty-one. That's why there's that significant increase. There's a slight offset with contract services, and then the circuit breaker adjustments that are occurring. This is that accounting change. But overall, it's going to be a benefit. The district will receive instead of one-point-nine million dollars, potentially two-point-one million dollars in circuit breaker. So overall, there is an increase because the sped tuition has increased. The accounting change is not netting the increase. It's the tuition increase that's netting the increase. So beyond that, staff development, this is where we do professional developments, very small appropriation, no significant change there. Uh, we have custodial plant. We've obviously zeroed out every account. Uh, we also just put down the note of the FTEs, the full-time equivalents, both here in the maintenance department primarily, and also the school custodians, because this number is gonna factor in when we get to the district office and talk about health insurance. So beyond that, we have transportation remains relatively um even. Uh, we have buses that we run. We also contract out. Uh, we have a high growth area in the homeless transportation. It's uh over half a million dollars. Two years ago, it was a hundred thousand. Probably four years ago, it was twenty thousand. The offset is still remains. We charge the fees. We collect the fees and then we offset the costs uh during transportation. Journal entry at the end of the year, or we'll charge directly. Crossing guards is uh still remaining in the district budget. Um, we obviously pay, they're on through payroll. It's just some adjustments that may, we're not eliminating positions. It's just uh having to do with hours and uh staff changeover. Overall, transportation really has one of the larger increases because of the contract increases for regular red and sped transportation. Utilities were level funding. There's been some benefits that have the, I've seen that occurred. Uh, the district is right sizing through the efforts of um uh Mr. Guset and Mr. Hayfield about a shifting over electrical cost to other brokers. That's bringing our cost down, application of net metering credits, so there's been uh some significant savings. We're level funding. We're confident that we can maintain the utility budgets for next year. District wide is a large budget for us. We have a number of individuals. Uh, obviously, all the administrators are here. A lot of budget accounts with one person in them, some minor adjustments, projected changes. Uh, this is another is uh comment about the uh offsets. We've received budgets on two accounts. We have a increase for uh anybody we hire over our projection, but we also have an offset um for anybody that leaves for retirement. So me logically, I'm just, I'm not gonna budget those two accounts because they they offset each other. Down here, I just rearranged everything to demonstrate how our health insurance budget has been used in the past. A lot of these offsets, um if you read the terminology on them, when they first were starting, there were certain assumptions about chargebacks to offset labor costs. We think it's clearer and it's better for our reporting purposes if we limit those all in the same area, which is um employee benefits. As I said, we're honoring the complete dollar amount. The concept of uh offsets is being maintained. So with a actual budget and then the offsets are, health insurance is eight-three-nine-six this year, which is, you know, dramatic. And then it's going back down to eight-three again, which strikes you maybe is not logically, but we're talking about a number of positions shifting over to the grant, so the cost goes away. So the majority of the people that um are moving, their health insurance costs are moving. Uh, we made some adjustments here directly, uh workers' comp, unemployment, Medicare. A lot of those are based on the activity of the We made some adjustments here directly, workers' comp, unemployment, Medicare. A lot of those are based on the activity of the staff. So we have a number of custodians moving to the city. We're not gonna be processing those costs anymore. A percentage, we will for the balance of the staff. Minor, we made some cuts in some other areas to try and keep everything moving. The decrease, you're seeing it's tying out. It's this health insurance having to do with the offsets. And this savings won't be realized if the staff is not shifted to the grants and changes are made. So that's where that's coming from. The last area we have is technology. This is what I mentioned before, I trimmed back our equipment accounts and with a full commitment that this dollar amount can be charged to the capital account. But we will need this money back in twenty-two. As I sold the school, as I told the school committee, you can wait until twenty-two to tell us no. But we're gonna ask to get that money back in next year's budget. So that's the end of our presentation. I'll just scroll back to the front and leave it there. If anybody has any question, I'll leave it open in case anybody wants me to go back to a specific page.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Scanlon. Actually, I need you to stop sharing your screen so I can see the counselors, make sure I they can get my attention. And if we need to, if we need to flip back to the book.
Okay, I'm just, I'm trying to get back to the front. I think that's one of the logical place to look at things. But if you want me to release the screen, I will and that.
Actually, you can leave it up there for now, Councilor Gould.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much, everyone, for your presentation in this very difficult time. Dr. Kerbel, thank you for all your good work here in PBD and we're looking forward to to the next team coming in. We, Dr. Kerbel, we appreciate what you've done for us. Thank you. I had some questions and I don't know who is the correct person to address it to, maybe Mr. Scanlon. Mr. Scanlon, in every school, there is an economic economically disadvantaged. Can you explain what that is and what percentage is, do we have to be at to gain some federal dollars if that's what it's for?
The, the short answer to your second part of your question is yes. These are numbers that, that we don't individually create. When students are moved into the district, they go through a protocol where their information is registered into the student information management system. Families and students may also be in statewide systems through other areas, other programs, so that we learn of different information on, you know, highly confidential information. But within the state, I mentioned that term SIMS, Student Information Management. Every student has control numbers and every student is registered at the state with all this elements of information, everything pretty much except for the student's name. So that's where this information is coming from. What they're doing is they're telling us of all the students in your location, this is the percentage that are high needs.
Mrs. Scanlon, may I jump in? Miss Conflin McGinn, may I address Mr. Gould with that question?
Yes, Dr. Vidal.
Thank you. Councilor Gould, it's a great question. Economically disadvantaged is a metric used to prior to that it was called low income. Low income was just the percentage of kids who received free or reduced lunch. A few years ago, any, any district that was over forty percent could apply for community eligibility. And it would be universal free lunch. So they stopped collecting lunch applications. So a lot of the urban districts like Boston, Springfield, Lawrence, no longer had that information. They didn't know how many kids were free or reduced lunch. So the term economically disadvantaged is the number of students who are receiving state assistance. So they're in the state database and then it populates our numbers. And so we know that there are greater, a greater number of students who receive free or reduced lunch, but the, the percentage of economically disadvantaged are students who are receiving state assistance. So that's a slight difference between that.
Thank you. Also, in that same data block, we talked about high need students. Each school has a high need student. Is that separate from special needs or is that incorporating all the?
So the metric that, that the Department of Education uses for high needs is multiple categories of potentially at risk or so the categories could be English language learners is one category, free or reduced lunch is one category, special needs is one category. So if you are in multiple subgroups, you're considered to be a high need student and the district receives additional funding through chapter seventy for the percentage of high needs kids.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Vidal, this might be in your wheelhouse. We have the Learning Academy. I never knew we had a summer program and it seems like there's more kids going in the summer than than during the regular school year. Is that typical?
Yes, and so Dr. Vidal works with PBD High School. He's sort of under the umbrella because the PBD Learning Academy also does credit recovery for the high school. So those, he oversees the summer programming. So th- those numbers are incorporated. So they may be PBD High School kids that need credit, credit recovery towards graduation requirements and he takes on additional role during the summer. Additional students oversee that.
Thank you, Dr. Vidal. Thank you, Chairman McGinn. I'm all set for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Gould. Council Well.
Thank you, Chairman McGinn. Thank you, everyone, for all of your hard work with putting this budget together and and Mr. Scanlon, thank you for your thorough explanation. I just had one question. It, it sounds like we've been able to move a, a large number, particularly paraprofessionals to the IDEA grant. I was just wondering if you could maybe give a little bit of background with what's allowable to move to the IDEA grant and then also if anything was potentially moved off of that to make room for the, the pairs being moved there. Just a little bit more background with that would be helpful. Thank you.
Mr. McGinn, I'm happy to fill that as well through you.
Dr. Vidal.
Thank you. Thank you, Conflin Welton. So we were able to identify some unspent funds in the FY nineteen grant towards out of district placements. So some of the funds in the IDEA grant, which is dedicated to special education, was spent on out of district tuition. We were able to carry that forward and apply it to FY twenty. So this year, we were able to offset some of our out of district costs, which then allowed us to carry money forward from FY twenty into twenty-one. So we're able to, again, use that same line item to pay for out of district tuition. We had originally budgeted for roughly three hundred thousand dollars worth of out of district tuition that we were able to carry money forward. So that freed up money for us to be able to pay for paraprofessionals for FY twenty-one. Able to take those out of the appropriated side and pay for them within the grant. Traditionally, we do pay for a number of, of paraprofessionals. We were just able to increase that number and have the savings on the appropriated side this year.
Great, thank you. That's a, a great explanation. So I really appreciate it and thank you for your creativity to find an opportunity to do that. Thank you very much.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you, Council Well and Council Turco.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's for you to Dr. Vidal. Sorry, Josh. So to Council, Council Welton's point, so in two thousand twenty-two, the, the availability of those grants won't be there. So we'll have to adjust those back to the general budget?
Not necessarily. Each year, we'll take a look at it with circuit breaker. Hopefully, this year, circuit breaker, we're able to include twenty-five percent of transportation costs. So we haven't realized that money yet. And so as we do, so you can carry two payments into next year. And so hopefully with some, some good budgeting, we'll be able to continue to carry money forward each year and apply that to the out of district tuitions, which will then offset it and be able to carry forward. So we're looking at this as a long-term investment and just year to year, being able to apply money forward as opposed to asking for more money.
Thank you, Dr. Vidal. Mr. Chairman, through you to Dr. Kerbel. Doctor, you would, Mr. Scanlon had mentioned the reduction of seven point five special education pairs at the Brown School. Were those transferred to a grant or was that, was that an actual reduction of special education pairs?
Dr. Kerbel.
Some of them, some of them were, were reduced and, and others were transferred into the, the grant.
The majority of those special education pairs, part of IEPs are mandatory. I mean, being that the Brown is essentially one-third special education students, just wondering how we were able to do that.
Well, that's, that's a great question and we have IEPs that we have to maintain and we can't, we can't eliminate. We, we can only consolidate and we can only eliminate so many people because we have to meet the needs of the IEP. So you know, to answer your question, you know, we, we moved, we moved the people that we could from the, from the Brown into the into the IDEA grant.
Okay, but if, if in fact, September first, the IP calls for, for a special education pair, we would need to hire and replace that pair, correct?
Absolutely.
So I don't know who this would be for. I believe Mr. Scanlon, thank you, Dr. Kerbel. Mr. Through you to Mr. Scanlon, Mr. Chairman. You mentioned a lot of money was transferred into revolving funds and I, and I get that. My problem is I don't see a historic historical balances in those revolving funds. So, you know, I trust that you, you've adequately made sure that the, the money will be there, but what, what makes me nervous about this is that if the revolving funds don't carry enough balance throughout the year to cover the, the expenses, does it then mean that we'll be looking at a supplemental budget in six months? So where's, where are those listed and where could I get a copy of the balances this fiscal year and, and past fiscal years for those revolving funds?
Mr. Scanlon.
Yes, if I can, it's, I'm, I'm a hundred percent confident the revolving funds have sufficient balance to cover the offsets for this year. And based on our revenues and expenditures, it's really more revenues and our fund balances. There is enough funds in there for next year. Part of the change is so that the school committee becomes more aware of these, you know, revolving fund activities and make sure that the charges are directly placed. Good school revolving funds, they should be involved in that. We, as I said, we've committed to meet the full amount of the chargeback. It, I'll use the word concept. Some of the chargebacks were thought with labor chargebacks. We're gonna be using benefit chargebacks, but we're hitting the same dollar amount. I'm confident that we'll have enough in those revolving funds.
Thank you, Mrs. Scanlon. Anybody that says a hundred percent, I, I have faith in. So you did say a hundred percent confidence in them and, and I'll take that for what it's worth. Was there any mention of the parking fees again? I, I know that that was a contentious issue. Are we charging parking fees again to the, the high school students this year? Through, Mr. Chairman, through you to, to Mr. Scanlon?
For the preschool students?
No, for the high school students for parking fees. I believe there was a hundred dollar fee that was a little contentious for us last year and I, I don't know if we, we've moved forward with that again.
Yes, we did. There were some, a number of charges. It's something that I, you know, would want to revisit. We did end up refunding pretty much what we collected. The number of students that paid parking, it really varies based on their grades, what, how old they are. But yes, we do collect those fees and that's built into the revolving fund offset concept that whoever maintains, the city maintains the grounds. That's why we do partial offset from the parking fee revolving fund.
So, so last year, through you, Mr. Chairman, to Dr. Scanlon. Last year, I think we estimated forty thousand dollars would be raised through parking fees. I, I would imagine we raised nowhere near that. Do we know what the number was?
I'm, I don't have the number right in front of me, but it does sound high. I think we were over a hundred thousand, but not closer to two hundred thousand. I can get that information and we'll follow up on it. We utilized it for doing the offsets at the year end. Haven't, the journal entry hasn't occurred yet. And then we use no other expenses through that revolving fund. So that's why the funds will be available next year after the fees are collected.
Okay, you, you, you may have misheard me. I'm, I'm sorry because parking fees, no, they wouldn't be in the hundred to two hundred thousand dollar range. So I, I was wondering. So do we have any estimate maybe through you to the mayor? May you, do you recall what we what we raised for parking fees?
Yeah, we had estimated, yeah, thank you, Mr. Turco. We had estimated forty thousand last year. We didn't, we didn't achieve that. A lot of that was obviously because we refunded a great deal of the money back to the students. Because it, it, that, that, that ability ended in March. So I think we can, kept that number at forty thousand if I'm not mistaken. And, you know, depending on how this goes this year, it might be a little below what we want. But it's, yeah, it's forty thousand is the number we're working off of.
Thank you. And last question, Mr. Chairman, through you to Mr. Scanlon. There was a line item in the vocational budget says DECA forms that has increased. What, what, what does DECA forms constitute?
I actually, if you don't mind, Josh or Chris, can you answer that question? I don't remember the acronym DECA.
Council McGinn, may I jump in?
Yes.
Sure. So through you to Mr. Turco. So the DECA is a, a business club that the kids do various things and, and they have a stockpile of, of forms and once they get updated, you know, annually or every few years, we do need to replace those. So they've utilized what they have. Forms are outdated. So we're just increasing that supply line to make sure that, that those kids have what they need to compete in their competitions and, and move forward with that.
Thank you, doctor. I wasn't aware of DECA. Both my kids have taken part in DECA, right? Just thought maybe it was a different acronym for something to do with vocational.
Yep, it's the same.
Thank you for explaining that to me. And, Mr. Chairman, that's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Council Turco. Council Rozzigno.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you to the school department for coming up with this very comprehensive budget, especially through these trying times. I'm gonna kind of bounce all over the place a little bit here. The, the first question I have is regarding the two special ed teachers at the West School. Are those eliminated positions or are those positions moved to the grant?
Dr. Vidal. Sure. So both of those positions were moved into other positions where teachers had retired. So we were able to combine two programs and the two teachers were moved into different positions through retirements. So we're able to reduce those positions through attrition, but not through layoffs.
So, but the two programs that, the two substantially separate programs that are housed at the West will still continue?
Those students would still be continued to be educated in a sub-separate setting, but not at the West.
I'm sorry?
They would not be at the West. They would be combined with, with programs at the Brown.
Okay. So, so the, so one substantially separate program will still remain at the West and one will be moving to the Brown?
So I, I believe one, one program is staying at the West and the rest are moving to the Brown. Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you. The next question I have is regarding the McCossey School and this is to Mr. Scanlon. In the beginning page, it says that enrollment dropped by thirty-three students, but it's not really actualized in the enrollment numbers. If you look at two thousand twenty's enrollment and two thousand twenty-one's enrollment, the numbers are the exact same. Even though the bottom number shows that there is a thirty-three student drop. I just didn't know if that's gonna change the FTEs of, of the teachers at the McCossey School.
Council Rozzigno, just pointing information. Which page are you looking at?
I'm sorry, page nine.
All right, could I trouble you for the row number on the left-hand side?
I'm sorry? So if you look at the enrollment numbers for FY two thousand twenty, it shows forty-three, forty-seven, forty-one, thirty-four, thirty-seven, forty-three. If you look at enrollment numbers for twenty-one, they're the exact same numbers, but a thirty-three student's different. So I'm just trying to get a grasp of where those thirty-three students kind of came from and went, A, and B, if that now changes teachers' FTEs.
I'm following what we've done normally and it, it looks like the, I connected the wrong cells. We, when the kindergartens come in the next year, that's the first grade number and second and so on. But I see your point. They're just going straight across. Apologize. That's an oversight of my part.
No, no, that, that's quite all right. But you're still gonna need the exact same amount of pitches and, and that FTE. That's, that's really kind of what I'm coming down to. Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
Sure.
The next question I have is regarding the vocational program. We, we now have a new vocational program. Is that the reason for the forty-nine percent increase in teaching salaries? Is that correct?
I can jump in on that one. Yes, we do have a new, we have a new program for criminal justice that was approved by DESI. But we also moved a teacher from the, a consumer science teacher which teaches within the vocational school. So that that number was taken out of the, the high school budget and moved into the vocational budget. So that's why it looks like there's an increase to teachers. So one new program and one just reallocation, appropriately budgeting that person under vocational.
Excellent, thank you. The other, next question I have is regarding contracts. The other, next question I have is regarding contracted services under the athletic budget on page nineteen. That contractual services, is that going to change any field maintenance or any maintenance as far as our athletic programming?
No, it won't change any of the services. What we, what's common and, you know, my, a prior district's athletic budget tends to charge a lot to the revolving fund. And we tend to charge the supplies and services that are variables. No town services will be charged to the revolving fund. Those will stay into the general fund. So the services that are being charged are variable. It might be this work that you need this year and you might not need the exact same work next year.
Okay, thank you. The other question I had was regarding transportation fees. If you look at page twenty-three and it says salary, transportation, OT athletics. And that jumped thirty-three thousand. It jumped a hundred percent. Can you just explain what that line item is? It's halfway down the very first section of the transportation portion.
Sure. That is a, a change of account alignment. I'd asked the city auditor to make that change. What we found is that the drivers over time driving for the athletic teams was charged to the athletic revolving fund, but they were transportation drivers. So it's just logical that we shifted that account over to the transportation appropriation. That's why there's no prior history in transportation. It's an accounting change, but yes, it does stand out. It's correctly accounted for now.
Fair enough. Thank you. And another question regarding transportation that went up seven point seven percent. I'm assuming that we're under a new transportation contract?
As I said, that's, the, the, the large increases have to do with the contractual increases of the signed contracts. We have the outsourced contract remains relatively the same. However, with root placements and different changes, we're anticipating a slight increase there. And as I mentioned, a continued increase in the homeless transportation. So those are things that have been reviewed and we have the breakdown of the different contracts as to what's justifying those budgets.
Thank you. And I, I'll yield for now, but thank you very much for this presentation. Thank you.
Councilor Rosignol, Councilor Assures.
Thank you, Chairman. And just for transparency, I just need to make a statement that my daughter has worked, well, she did work for the district. She's no longer because of layoffs, but potentially coming back. Just want to make that transparent that my daughter has worked for the public schools. I do understand that I can vote.
Just based on your statement, I'm, I'm not going to interpret that as, as a desire to recuse yourself from any.
No.
Thank you.
I just need to make the statement, I understand that I have the right to participate. Thank you.
Thanks.
This is to Dr. Gerbo, Kerbo. For the first page in it states all the percentages of special education, high needs, economic needs, things. If I add that up, what is the, how do I determine the percentage of traditional educators, education? Do they all fall into somewhat of those groups? Through the chair.
No.
Okay. So the answer is no, they are a separate group?
So, oh, um, you could have, you could have an overlap. Okay, but you're missing, if you add them all, you're not going to get to a hundred percent, is that's what you're asking me?
Well, if I add special ed, high needs, economic disadvantage, English learner, it comes up to pretty close to one hundred percent.
Okay.
Am I incorrect?
Yeah, but, yes, you're incorrect because
Okay.
we have, because there are, you know, we have typical families that don't fall into any, any one of these categories and then affect other, other particular categories.
Okay, I still don't understand, but I don't want to take up the time. I'll, I'll give you a call. It's, it's, it's just my, for me to understand the, the column, that's all.
Well, I hope, maybe, maybe Joe, maybe somebody else can explain better than me.
Yeah, I just want to offer, maybe I'm not understanding your question, but in terms of the percentage of the, the students, some of the students are unfortunately qualifying in different categories. So you could have the same students qualifying in three of those categories.
And they add to that percentage?
So it wouldn't, yeah, it wouldn't, it's never going to achieve a hundred percent because.
I, I understand now. Thank you. Going back to the idea grant that we see a lot of changes going into. How, how long is that grant bought?
That's an entitlement grant. We get it every year. It's based on the percentage of special education students. So it's a federal grant based on the number of special education students. We receive a certain allocation each year. We can, we, we can manipulate that grant to be able to use it for different things. It's as long as it's going towards special education students. So similar to your question was Mr. Conklin Walton's question where he asked, you know, why was there such an increase? And it was because we had realized funds from FY nineteen and just budgeted correctly and did a better job previously with some of those offsets where we accounted correctly for the circuit breaker. And one year, three years ago, circuit breaker reimbursement was only sixty-eight percent. And so it was underfunded, which kind of put us at deficit. But last year it went up to, over the past three years, it went from sixty-eight to seventy-two to seventy-five, which is fully funded. So when we get seventy-five percent, we realize more money, we can apply that to the grant and then we don't have to use the grant money. We can use it on personnel.
Okay. And, and I'm sorry, I'm going to back up. I, I want to apologize. Being a former city school committee member, I know all the hard work that the school committee members put into this budget. So I, no disrespect when I'm asking questions, I, I know they work so hard. I just want to understand. I'm not questioning them. I'm just want to understand the, the grant. So I always said I would never forget where I came from and I, I will. But in on special ed carryover, that's the only, only area that we can carry money over, correct?
So with all the grants, unspent money can be amended into the next year. So we are able to realize some money in each of the federal grants that was, that were unspent because of the closure and be able to carry those forward. So that, that is helping, you know, sort of a net savings that can offset the, the deficit that we're seeing in the, in the revenue shortage that we have.
Sure. Great. Thank you. I'm going to try to go as, as quick as possible. One of the things that stood out quite vivid was the, in the, the McCarthy, the McCarthy preschool program, it looks like you're eliminating the director of the program. Can you talk about that? Uh, to Dr. Padaya, uh, Mr. Scanlon?
And so my understanding is that, that staff member had retired in January. And so it is a position that we're looking to, you know, since it wasn't filled, we didn't have to lay somebody off. So we decided to not hire that position and basically take on that responsibility internally so that we didn't have to lay somebody else off. So if we were to fill that position, we would hire someone new and then have to lay somebody off. So we decided that was something that we could, you know, hopefully for one year, be able to, you know, increase the capacity of, of other people and oversee that program effectively through the building principal and the special ed department for one year and lean on the team chairperson a little bit as well to, you know, that way we wouldn't be bringing in a new person and laying somebody else off. We just decided to leave that position unfilled and unfunded for one year in order to get to the budget number that we needed to get to.
So you're saying that was a re- retirement?
That person retired in January who was in that, that previous role.
In January?
I believe so.
Okay. Okay. I, I, I understand only because my youngest daughter was in that school. And I got to tell you, it, it, it was a lifesaver. And I know some members in the, the school committee certainly understands what that program does. So I'm, I'm very nervous to see, as you know, Doctor, when we're able to get them as young and get the services to them and keep them in district. We do save a lot. And I'm concerned with the, whatever IEPs were written and designed, that we'll be able to follow through. That's a big job. And I have, I'm, I'm very concerned. So I, I, I certainly hope and I'm sure that you're looking at it very closely. But I, I am very, very concerned with that stuck out. And with that, just because that stuck out, I, I looked at it a little closer. Are we eliminating some sub separate classes in, in the McCarthy preschool also?
So there's one classroom that we're able to reduce because of low enrollment. And we're able to combine two classes and again, save the teacher's position through a retirement. And then that, that person can take a different position in the district. So through, through a retirement, we're able to combine some classrooms, reduce the number of positions in the, in the district, but not necessarily lay people off.
Sure. And obviously we're honoring the IEP arrangements and contracts we had with that. So we're not missing any programs or services to any students that was already negotiated with the IEP meetings and things of that nature. Great. Okay. One of the other things you could talk about is a lot of this special ed powers being transitioned into the, the grant, right? And the benefits go, the benefits can go to the grant also?
So you can pay benefits out of the grant, yeah.
Okay. And obviously next year, my worry is that when if that grant is not fully funded again or changes, is that we're going to have to bring that back in. And then, as you know, the budget looks that much higher than actually it is. So I just wanted to understand that myself. So the, so you're not losing the powers per se, you're just transferring the, the cost into a grant.
In some cases, yes. And, and so when they go into the IDEA grant, that's an entitlement grant that we get every year. And through proper budgeting, we can hopefully keep them in that grant and that's sustainable. The emergency relief grant that we got is a one-year grant. So we wouldn't put any full-time positions with benefits into an emergency relief grant, knowing that it's just for one year. That would be, you know, like the part-time kindergarten paras, we're able to, you know, to, to, for one year, use that as a stopgap, knowing that the following year, as funding increases, as revenue increases, we'll be able to bring them back into the appropriate side.
Okay. And, and I'm sorry, I know you, I'm going to back up a little bit too. You did say that the, the preschool director's job was going to be shared with staff there now.
So, Councilman McGinn, can I jump in, please?
Go on.
Okay, thank you. And just received a text from the special ed director. So there was a kindergarten director that, that Dr. Madala was talking about. There is a preschool director that will become a chairperson. And Dr. Madala was right regarding what will happen to the preschool director's position over the year. But the person that's currently there now will become the team chair at the preschool.
Okay, so I'm assuming that the, Dr. Kerbel, you're talking about the retirement was the kindergarten coordinator?
Right. Yes.
So we're going to, are we filling that position also?
No.
No. And we're not filling the position of the retired preschool director or that, that position's not retired. They just moved over, as you just said, to.
Exactly. And that to another position. Exactly.
To another position?
Right.
But we're still not going to have a preschool director nor a kindergarten coordinator?
As of right now, as of right now, and that's something that we're going to have to look at later on, but as of right now, that's not filled. Correct.
Yeah.
And, and, and we agree with you. We know, we know where you're going with that.
Yeah, that's dangerous. That's dangerous.
Yeah, we agree with you.
Yeah, that's dangerous. Okay. So, okay, so I get, Dr. Kerbel, just so I understand, until then, unless you readjust it. And I understand this, this is all fluid.
Right.
Believe me, you came back into, to working field probably with the wrong year. So I, I really tip my hat to you. So you're doing a great job.
Thank you. But the council, I came in the best year.
I know. I, I appreciate it. The, so the, the preschool director and the kindergarten coordinator, those jobs are going to be picked up by other people in the district.
As a, I'm sorry, as a, I'm, I'm just answering, I don't think anybody else wants, okay, thanks. Put it this way, counselor, if not, then who will? Okay, so we know that preschool and kindergarten, that's the heart of education.
Yeah.
Okay, everything you learn, you learn in kindergarten and pre-K. So we know what it takes to, you know, to lead that effort, especially because of so many transitions, but we'll have to look at that.
Yeah, I, I, I'm, I'm kind of surprised. So thank you. So going forward to, and I understand, and I didn't see anything in here or any conversations or line items about adjustment counselors. Are they, where are they in the budget? Through, I guess through Mr. Scanlon.
Mr. Scanlon. Mr. Scanlon, my question was about adjustment counselors. Do you have any?
Which position specifically, please?
I don't see, and maybe I'm, I'm overlooking and, and I, I got to hand it to you. I love the larger font. I haven't seen that for, for years, so thank you. But I haven't seen anything with the adjustment counselors in, I guess it would be mainly would stick out in the middle and high school.
Excuse me, they might, they might be in the special education budget.
They are all in the special education budget. I'm just spinning down there to see if I can get a line for you.
Page twenty, line seventeen, twenty-one. Ten, ten point six.
Seventeen, twenty-one. Correct.
Okay. Is that a reduction?
No, the one below it is adjustment.
It's eleven point five. I apologize. Ten point six was FY nineteen. Just give me one second. I'm sorry, the, the line item number is what?
Seventeen, twenty-one.
Seventeen, twenty-one?
Looks like a thirty-six.
Okay, yes. Increase. Thank you. Thank you. The substitute, I'm glad, I'm glad you broke it down that way so I could see it because it did look like we're eliminate the, the substitute costs, athletics. Give me, it's just taking me a bit. Again, just so I can understand. Culture salaries dipped a little bit, that's, but game staffing, is that because of uncertainty of games and with COVID for the fall?
Is that directed to the council?
Uh, I'm sorry, to the council, to, I, I'm, I'm going to guess Mr. Mr. Scanlon, he, the number guy.
Scanlon.
In which building? I'm sorry?
This is athletics.
Okay.
It's, it shows a game staff that you, it was fourteen, five, oh, four. You seal that out? Is that because you're not expecting to have games in the fall? That would require staffing?
Well, the, the increase, just to recycle through, the increase is because we moved all the PE teachers there. So that's the dramatic increase. Those, the, the red deficits you see is those costs are going to be shifted over to the athletic revolving fund. So it, it basically is a level funded budget. It, we're just restructuring it.
Okay. So the, the game staff is going to the revolving fund? It's going to be paid out of that, you're saying?
Correct.
And that will go all the way down with the maintenance and police detail and such as that?
Correct.
Okay. That makes, that makes sense. And again, on. on page twenty, on the special ed district, the the minus of one million two hundred and ten is a prepaid, I'm assuming, if that falls into prepaying from this year left over into next year. Item seventeen oh three three.
Oh, right, that was the one that explained, yes, that's, because we can't charge those to the grant anymore.
Right.
It relates to that shifting we were talking about with the staffing.
But you can pay it, uh, left over to this year, prepaid.
I'm sorry, I thought you were asking about the legal fees.
Nope, nope, tuition collaborative. Out of the special education district Y seventeen zero three three.
Those are based on projections of where the students will be attending and students are placed in different facilities. So intended that maybe more services going into a collaboratives or less going into collaboratives. But that's also an adjustment where the the circuit breaker that you're not seeing, the line above it is being applied to that account. So the offset is no longer an individual count, it's part of another.
I see, okay. Thank you, and did, I, if I remember correctly, one of the school committee meetings I was watching, you've made a negotiated payment on transportation from this year that we didn't pay on the dollar, correct?
Yes, what we've done on transportation is we haven't extended the contract, this is something that went through Mr. Dusseth's office. So our primary carrier, Healy, is we'll be using him for another two years. The special education transportation is bid out on a route-to-route basis, we're bidding the summer routes now. And then we have internal transportation, we have buses and drivers that we manage internally for the city.
Yeah, no, I I don't think you, I probably wasn't clear. Transportation costs that we budgeted for two thousand and twenty, this past year that just ended. Obviously, we didn't have as much to transport using the private sector. So did we make an arrangements with not fully paying transportation that we didn't utilize because of COVID?
Yes, what that, what we did on transportation was we negotiated a settlement with Healy and the other carriers that were paying sixty percent on all the money that we withheld, we've not paid them a dime yet, but that's something that we need to do in order to close the books. The state wanted us to pay a hundred percent, a lot of the other districts agreed to pay eighty to ninety percent, but we're paying sixty percent.
Yes, congratulations on that, yeah, city's done a great job with that. The last question, hopefully, is in the proposal, we talked about user fees, now with custodian and a maintenance cost coming over to the city. In the policy, the school always had a policy on a user fee and a custodian fee. Right, that was charged out to different groups. So.
It's terminology, I'm sorry to cut you off, you want to ask your question?
Yep, so I didn't see anywhere in the, and I know you have the big book and you don't have the big book, but you have taken into consideration that user fee for the building using fee, that is non-wavable, am I correct? I think its policy is non-wavable, the custodian's fee is wavable, but that cost is now gonna be turned over, the charge will be turned over to the city, am I correct?
Right, as I said, I would defer to Mike how he wants to handle it, what I suggested, and I'll go back to the word, whether it's appropriate in the budget, it's the concept of the chargeback. We have the ability to charge for people who use the building, my logic is they use the lights, why don't we just charge it back to the utility accounts rather than the custodian accounts? So it's not labor, it goes into another account for service. The city decides to do, you will agree.
But in the, so that's actually more complicated, I guess, than the custodian fee, because the custodian fees will be coming out of the city side budget, so any cost that goes to this, to the user of custodian fees will go, and but you don't have, I wanna make sure that it's not in your budget that you account for. Like, we used to estimate it, how many, how much dollars we would bring in each year on those, you didn't have that this year, correct?
No, obviously, it's a different year because of what happened, but I'll just reiterate, you know, what I said, I'm fully committed to whatever amount of chargeback, I have ideas how we can accomplish it, but it's really what the city decides, just Michael tell me what to do and we'll do it.
Yeah, no, I I have no, no fear that the money doesn't go where it's supposed to, I just don't want the school committee, schools to figure on a certain dollar and not get that. Because I do have a feeling that even though this budget is fluid, you're gonna need relief as months come.
I can reassure, the school committee has the same interest in these fees, they want me to report on them, so you'll learn about them.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, and again, if you can just take, and as as Dr. Kerbel did, he has the same concerns of of those two other positions that I talked to, that I think could be very damaging for the district if we don't have that, so thank you again, I appreciate all your work you have done and not guessing, second guessing your decisions under school committee decisions, I just wanna understand, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Shress, other councils, Councilor O'Neill.
Thank you, Chairman McGinn, I'd be remiss if I didn't echo the other counselors and Mayor Bettencourt's. Thank you for Dr. Kerbel coming in at this difficult time through this year without missing a beat. And certainly Dr. Lloyd doing the same thing, and I I haven't had a chance, but I wanna welcome Dr. Vidal to the PB school system and wish you very good luck. Since you've done a very in-depth presentation here tonight, and I've been watching the school committee meetings on TV also. And I guess, you know, I think we're all dealing with the same situation, not only in the city side, but certainly in the school budget, there's so many headwinds with the economic downturn. And I know that, you know, the phrase has been used quite a few times, but it is a fluid budget, and I'm hope, no one wants to see any kind of reductions in in headcount, whether it be the paraprofessionals or other staff, but I know that we're gonna work if we can get additional funds to to fill in whatever holes may pop up. I, as a city council, don't get a lot of school questions, but one that comes up, has come up historically that I just wanted to ask is the the transportation fees for the school buses to the high school. I I just didn't know what that current fee was, it used to be three hundred for per student and two hundred per family. And I just, I didn't see what we've collected or where that is a line item, so that's why I want, I don't know if I should ask Mr. Scanlon or or Dr. Kerbel or or.
You're on you, Mr. Scanlon.
I don't have the exact fee with me, I'm trying to remember where I have it. But again, this year was unique, we collected the fees, there is a family cap on it, and then we turned around and refunded most of them. But it's one of our larger fee accounts, we collect the fees and then offset the charges for transportation.
No, thank you, that's, I know it's fairly sizable, that's why I was asking, A, what the current amount is, and I know that this year is an aberration, I get that, but it just, it comes up. People say like, hey, I I gotta pay to move my kid, this fee and a family of two, it's six hundred bucks, so I I'm not saying we negate it, but it does come up and we end up with a lot of people driving their students up there to to save on the fee. I just wanted to ask what it was going into the new current year, if we have that fee, if you can just send an email.
It is something.
And I guess the total line item, I'd be interested in that and where that offset shows up in this budget as proposed in twenty twenty-one.
It it shows up directly in the transportation cost, it'll be offset, almost you could say it, it's an offset to the Healy contract. I did get my revolving fund report open, transportation, we've taken over a quarter million dollars each year. So it has that type of activity, it does roll from year to year, we had a hundred thousand, that's where I was misstated, the student parking, as Mayor Bettencourt said, did only take in twenty thousand, it's the transportation that had the larger fund balance. The rates I don't have, I can, we'll get those to the school committee.
Okay, thanks, so on page twenty-three, there's a line item, transportation fees offset of two hundred and ninety thousand seven hundred and fifty. Is that the bus fees, if you will, for the high school?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I was looking for, okay, that's a significant amount, okay, thank you, no further question.
Thank you, Councilor O'Neill, Councilor Manning-Mann.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and Dr. Kerbel, yes, you were my coach when we were Higgins Hellions. Back when the Higgins was Hellions, it was a, I ruined the day, they changed that, the name of the teams. But yes, you taught me how to round bases, slide, and you also broken my brand-new glove for me, because I couldn't catch the ball, and you brought it home, you brought it back to me a week later, and it was like, felt like it was ten years old, and I never dropped a ball, you were a great guy, a good teacher, and thank you for coming to the city of PB, your hometown and helping us out through a very difficult time. And that being said, you also said of me, Dr. Kerbel, when I was in seventh grade, I asked too many questions. So nothing's changed, I have some questions. If we go to the athletic athletic account, and could you explain to me again, I didn't grasp in the manner it was explained, how there was a cost savings by moving six teachers. Cause they are teachers, they're in Unit A, over to the athletic department in the amount of four hundred sixty-three thousand dollars. And the original FTEs, before you added those six, was four point three. So the original FTEs of four point three, were those Unit A teachers, were those gym teachers? The original ones, prior to adding six for four sixty-three thousand?
Dr. Kerbel.
Okay, what it, what that's reflecting in the athletic budget, there are teachers that are budgeted there full-time, PE, health teachers, spend primarily activities in different schools, so for the accounting process, they were there, the four and the five is still there, it's part of the eleven. What it is, is that the other, with math, is doing the other six teachers in the schools, the schools are seeing not a one teacher, they're seeing point sevens and point fours. So what that changes is we're just rolling them all together and then assigning them correctly. We found out that they were not evenly being assigned on the schools from an accounting standpoint. And so that's what that change was, just taking everybody out of the school accounts and rolling them into this district-wide account.
Because earlier, when you were describing why you moved was it overtime transportation into the transportation out of the athletics? That made sense to me, because the individuals were in transportation, so it didn't blind them, so that made sense to me. This does not make sense to me. And it's, I get, I get very, what's the word, uncomfortable when, when there's a large number, you know, almost a half a million dollars is shifted from one account to another, that was a a big move, and for accountability sake, who's, who's accountable for them, is the athletic director now accountable for them? Or are the individual principals who used to be accountable, they used to be accountable to, who does their performance evaluations, who do they answer to? Because if you move them due to, they used to be a point seven, you're trying to consolidate, it sounds like there wasn't accountability, or at least that's what I heard, if that wasn't intended, that's what I heard. And then, so now we're gonna move them over to the athletic director, so I have some concerns there, so.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, so the teachers will be still assigned to the same places. When you have such small elementary schools, sometimes there's a teacher who's teaching point two in one building, point four in one building, and point four in one building. It adds up to one point oh. What we found is that because of shifting enrollments, the teachers are moving around a lot, and sometimes we have a phys ed teacher who teaches health and phys ed. And when we added the numbers up, we found that some people were budgeted in at one point two, which was negatively impacting the budget, and it was an error. And it became sort of an accounting nightmare, because every time we went through a budget, a principal would say that person's in my building two and a half days, and this person's in my building one and a half days. And so it made more sense to house them all under athletics, because they're health and wellness teachers. And that way, we could ensure that they were all one point oh in the budget, and then assign them to each of the buildings appropriately so that they can be supervised by the same principals and whatnot. Day to day, they're still going to be doing the same job and and being overseen by the same people. From a budgeting standpoint, we had errors in the budget, we over-budgeted different people because they were in so many different locations. So by doing this, we can account for them more cleanly, instead of having them on three different sheets, we have them all on one sheet. And so it makes sense that we're accounting for them, and one of the issues with health and wellness is that some teachers teach phys ed, and some teachers teach health, and some teachers do both, so when they did both, sometimes they were counted twice, and it was having a negative impact on our budget. So it's more of an internal move for us to account for them better, rather than the accountability of the teachers and the administrators. They're all doing their job, and they're doing a great job.
Quite confident that, I'm quite confident that they are, it just seems like to me that it's a, it's a move to make it easier for perhaps you folks to do the budget. And I can understand a desire to do that, for me, makes me very uncomfortable to make such a move for a half a million dollars and move it into the athletic budget for, and I don't mean any offense, and this isn't a criticism, for convenience of the the gatekeepers of the budget.
I mean, we wouldn't wanna see somebody missed and be, we wouldn't wanna see somebody missed and be budgeted at a point seven and then be under, underfunded or overfunded, in this case, we had over-budgeted. You know, because we had accounted for people more than once in more than one location, and as people got moved, you know, it became an HR and and a budgeting nightmare. This is just the way, a lot of different places have everything on one sheet, we have seventeen different sheets here, or twenty different sheets here. So in order to, in order to make it clean and for everybody to see it, a person is in one location, and then he's assigned or she's assigned to multiple buildings at the elementary level, it's just, it's it's a way to make sure that we're honest and we're transparent with our numbers, and you can see them all in one place rather than somebody in three different budgets at at a decimal place, you know, so it's, it's just a way, another way of accounting for it. But we wanna make sure that it's accurate, and this is the cleanest way that we can be clear about who's there, who's getting paid, and how much they're getting paid.
And, okay, it's it's clear to you, that's clear to me, that it's clear to you, but again, there probably were various ways for you to address that rub that you were finding, and I I don't particularly care for for this one, but that's just me. So moving on. The, in staying in the athletic department, I see that the athletic director got a seven percent salary increase. And I noticed, I think that the music director got a five percent salary increase, and the rest of I think everybody else got a two percent. And just two days ago, at our other budget session that we just had, there was some healthy discussion and debate about fairness and equity of salary increases. So given that we are, we have this pandemic, we're heading into things we've never seen before. And this is my twenty-second budget. And I've never, and Mr. Gingrich, feel free to correct me, but I've never gone into a budget where, when we were presented the budget and we approved the budget, we did not know upon completion and approval what the tax, what the taxing implication was gonna be and what the tax classification was going to be. So in June, we would know, and we'd be able to face the taxpayers that, what the tax increase was gonna be, we would know in June, and and we're in a situation now, and it's understandable, you know, Mr. Gingrich said it's a, it's fluid, we don't know what the tax classification is gonna be, and we're gonna have to work on it. But, so these things just make me very nervous that we're going in blindly, and we have to, because we don't know what's coming in from the state. And and I get it, and and our tax revenues are down because of the situation we're in. So I just want you to know that that is, that is the sensitivity that I'm working under when I'm, when I'm going through these numbers, is fear the unknown. So those raises of, for those of one for seven percent and one for five percent, if we're just talking about fairness and equity, and if we're just talking about fairness and equity, and, and given the, the budget crisis that we're facing, uh, could, could, could you explain the rationale behind giving such increases at this time?
Those, those are contractual increases, so sometimes people get, they hit a certain longevity pay increase. It's, they're not, each of these employees is not a contracted employee who has a separate, um, their own individual contract that we can just decide to increase by 2% or 7%. Uh, they have their traditional salaries is increased by whatever the, the contract says, so it's 2%. And sometimes people get either a new degree, or they get a longevity payment, and, and there may be a, a year that's an outlier where they get a big increase. And so that may have happened in those two line items.
And those two, you don't know, you don't know the answer? There's only two of them. It doesn't strike you as why they reached that number? Was it a lane change or a degree or what? There's only two of them. I, I figured you'd know. No?
The line, I mean, I, I could die, is, hasn't even started yet, so maybe they appropriate to ask that from somebody that's uh, Mr. Scanlon.
That's fair, that's fair, Mr. McGinn.
Mr. Scanlon, you're on mute.
Sorry, oh, thank you. I opened up the, the salary file. The, the difference with, uh, the athletic director's salary is a stipend, uh, was added, uh, during this year prior to, um, Mr. Murtagh passing, uh, this athletic director took on additional responsibility for health. So what we're doing is there's, he has a $5,500 stipend that I budgeted in full for next year. Uh, there was some changes in position is what I'm told, and he assumed, uh, responsibility for overseeing the health curriculum in the schools, and he didn't have that responsibility for. So that's why it misrepresented, I should have somehow factored the increase of that stipend. He received a partial stipend this year, um, but that's the full stipend for next year.
And I, when Phil Sheridan was the, and maybe some school committee members who were there certainly uh, sooner or, or less time ago than I was. Um, when Phil Sheridan was there, I believe that he oversaw all the health direction, uh, uh, health department as well. So I don't know why a stipend was added to ha- his salary when it was, uh, under Phil Sheridan's, the athletic directors for years. That was my, my recollection.
Understood. I mean, as, um, Dr. Vidal said, majority of, uh, stipends, uh, are longevity. Uh, but there are a few stipends, I could, you know, put a list together. Uh, different, uh, teachers, department heads taking on additional responsibilities. Uh, very, maybe two dozen staff members receive an additional stipend.
Okay, um, and along those lines, since you, um, brought it up, Mr. Scanlon brought up the screen, I thank you for that. Um, the music director, he's got a 5% or a 4.9% increase. Did he get a stipend as well?
The, I'm sorry, the athletic director.
And music director, he got a 4.9% salary increase. Did he get a stipend as well?
Okay. Uh, yes, he does receive an additional stipend. Um, I'd have to look to see whether or not it was factored in his baseline salary. You know, we should be representing the salaries as, you know, as closely as possible.
Mm-hmm, yes.
I'll get over there if there's another question.
Okay, so, speaking of stipends, um, the coaches for the spring season, they were paid their stipends, is that correct?
That, in terms of the stipends when they're paid, is that your question?
They got their, they got paid. The spring coaches got paid. Don't they get paid by stipends?
Oh, yeah, that's a, right. Uh, currently through the contract, the stipends are paid at the beginning of the seasons. And, um, you know, I think what, uh, we could investigate, but I, I'm not negotiating contracts. A lot of districts paid half upfront and half at the end of the season. So it was, it happened in a lot of district, the coaches got paid upfront, and then the spring sports and the spring activities didn't occur.
It, so, did, um, they, of course, they didn't occur. Some communities chose not to, um, pay them, some paid them, you know, 10% into the season if they did some preliminary work. Uh, and, and some paid in full, and PB paid in full, and I would imagine that was not a vote of the school committee, is that correct?
Again, the payment is per contract. Those things are, you know, established in payroll, and they won't change. So whenever the payments go out, it's meeting the expectation. And just to finish, the performing arts director, he did have an additional, uh, stipend applied this year. That's part of the salary difference.
Okay, thank you. Um, so back to the coaches, so it just was matter of course that it just paid it out, that it didn't hit, it didn't come across anyone's desk to make a decision? Because it, in other communities, it hit somebody's desk and decisions were made. Sounds like there was no decision made here.
Dr. Kerbel.
Thank you, thank you. I, I appreciate the questions, the same question I asked, uh, counselor. And that the, there's, there's several things that happened. One, the, the coaches were paid. Secondly, the coaches did do some work. I asked for all the remote learning, I asked for any lesson plans that they had. Okay, and I got them. I got them from every coach. And, um, so it's not like we paid them and they didn't do anything. They kept in contact with, uh, from what I know, they kept in contact with athletes, um, throughout the spring. Is it the same? No, but, but they did their best, I believe. I mean, we hire people with integrity, so on, when they say that they was working remotely with athletes, I would believe them.
But, and, and that would be fair. I mean, would we pay them 100, 100% working remotely? Um, if, if it came to me, I would say no, but it sounds like you came in after that decision or after that payment happened. Sounds, that's what it sounds to me, Dr. Kerbel, that you weren't there at the time. Because it sounds like you had ex post facto review.
Well, when I asked, when I asked the question about, about payment, because I was thinking similarly.
Yep.
Um, the, the, the checks were already cut, I was weeks behind. Um, nobody's fault. I think that, there's, it's contractual, counselor, in terms of when people get paid. And, uh,
Fair enough.
I, I, I understand your point, though.
Yep, okay, so my point is taken, excellent. So if we can move on now to the, that was the spring. So now we have been surprised about, um, winter. Uh, so what is our plan going into fall and winter? Have we set a precedent now that if there are no fall and winter sports, that we're going to automatically pay? Um, because we paid the spring. Wha- what's your plan for the fall and winter? Um, given the unknown of, of COVID-19, and whether or not the kids are going to be able to play?
I, I'll, it, what is, um, I don't want to put it on Dr. Vidal yet, but I will.
You can answer.
Okay, I will, but I, I will see, I'll just give you my opinion. In that, um, we learned a lot remotely this year, counselor. We paid a lot of people, okay, and then, and, um, our guidance from the Department of Ed was to do just that. Um, now that we can think forward, I would imagine that Dr. Vidal and his planning team with the school committee would have to start asking the same questions you're asking, and to work with our, um, union presidents, so that we're all on the same page. And I will say, I speak very highly of our union presidents. We worked out and solved a lot of problems, a lot, counselor. And I'm very proud about what had happened. And I, I have a lot of, I have full faith in Dr. Vidal and the school committee, that to be able to work things out.
Excellent. Um, just as long as it's on, uh, it's on the radar, it, it, you know, it, I think it slipped by people, given our circumstances. Just as long as moving forward, it's on the radar. And Dr. Vidal, um, welcome. Um, happy to have you. And I didn't mean to direct questions to you, I'm directing them to a, a wide screen of people here, whoever can answer them. I know you just, you're not even, when do you start, like, next week?
So I first.
Exactly, so we're good. I, I get it.
I appreciate that.
Yes, believe me. Um, okay, so thank you for that, and if I can move on to the
Before you move on.
Yep.
Mr. Scanlon, you had indicated you wanted to make a comment. Do you still want to make that comment with respect to the earlier question you all said? Mr. Scanlon. You're on mute. All right, Councilman Manning Martin, we're going to move on.
Thank you. Um, if we can go, uh, what I had noticed, um, in the principal's supply line, it seems to vary school to school. Is there a formula based on, um, how many students? Uh, be, and that's my first question, we got supplies on the supply line for the principals.
Um, well, I answered your question, that's, uh, the exact same question the school committee asked. Uh, there's two parts to it. One, um, I would prefer that the supply budgets are spread per pupil. I've done that in my other districts, we just haven't gotten to it yet here. The other part is, you know, the principals are excellent at managing their budgets, as you, I'm sure you're not surprised to hear. Certain things don't need to be purchased every year, so you, you'll see a variable, some accounts will be high. They'll buy their office supplies, they don't need them. Next year, they buy a lot of instructional supplies, so those are the two changes. We really, if you go back three years, they had much larger budgets. I think with the budget challenge of 19 hip, the instructional, the school supply budgets were cut. I don't want to exaggerate, I, I was told they're about in half, but, um, that's, um, we're trying, try and get them built back up over time. It was part of our strategic, uh, with the SOA monies, but, um, I think that we could do a better job getting it spread per pupil also.
And I'm just talking about the principal's supply, principal's office supply line. And if that would, if that would go as well to the teacher's supply line to have a formula per, per pupil, you know, I leave that to the experts. Um, but in, some of the principals have, have zero. And it runs the gamut, and one of them has up to $5,600. Some of them was zero every year, some of them are 300. You have some schools that, you have one, two, three, four, five, six. Six schools to include the Higgins Middle School and the high school, the largest schools. Principal's supply, principal's office supply line item is fi- is under $500.
Right.
You have, um, and there, you know, there's four elementary schools that are under 500, and then there are some elementary schools where it's really high. And in the McCarthy in particular, it appears, and it may just be an optic, but it looks like a really bad optic to me, is that it appears that, and yes, the teacher's supplies over the years have been cut. And, um, and that's unfortunate, because they're always going into their own pockets. But, at, the McCarthy, the 20 budget, actually the FY19 and 20 budget for the teachers', uh, supplies were $12,000, and for FY21, uh, it's $6,600. And 50, 5,600 of it went into the principal's supply off, uh, line. So they got cut in half again, and the teachers, uh, the principal's line, supply line went from zero to $5,600. That's not a good optic. The teachers are digging into their pockets. Um, and in many schools, it looks like the principals defer to the teachers', uh, supply line. Um, which is why theirs is so low. Maybe they, they're old school, maybe they, one hand washes the other. You know, it's old school, that's wonderful, that's great, uh, whatever make, whatever works to keep the school, you know, with supplies. But I think you get a problem there, and whatever way you can address it across the board to make it fair and equitable per, per pupil, um, I would suggest that.
We agree. We'll follow up on that.
And, uh, you may have mentioned this, and I got a work call while we were going on, so I apologize if you're repeating yourself. Um, the PBMS is less 30 FTEs, the high school, to, to about $1 million. And I, you probably addressed that.
Yeah, the, the transfer to the grant, is that what the, is that, are you in the high school?
I am, yes.
Okay. The 30 FTEs, if you're looking straight up that column, half of it kind of is right above you. Those are the custodians. There's a large number of custodians at the high school and also at, um, Higgins. And then you just keep going up, and there's the 16 paraprofessionals. Uh, you know, so between those two, that's 27, and then, you know, the rest of it is there.
Thank you.
Yeah, nobody, I mean, sorry.
That's okay.
Very few jobs are being lost, they're all just being transferred to another funding source.
Very good. That's what I wanted to hear. Thank you very much. And, um, you may have answered this as well, with regard to transportation, since the school has been, um, closed and there's no transportation. Has there been any savings? Or is it only fuel? Is it all contractual, and we only saved on fuel?
Yeah, I mean, we're, it's status quo for transportation. You know, we did look at some options, but it's, uh, a very sophisticated operation. So there's nothing we can do in the short term, uh, but there is potential. Uh, we're, we're about half outsourced and half in district. So we could, you know, look at different possibilities, uh, but nothing is on the immediate works for next year.
Okay, well, I asked a lot of questions, Dr. Kerbel. Nice to see you again. Thank you, and thank you all for your hard work.
Thank you, Councilman Manning Martin. The counselors. Counselor Sash, what?
Thank you, Chairman McGinn, and, uh, once again, I'll echo the sentiments of my fellow listeners. Thank you, Dr. Kerbel, for stepping in and, uh, at the right time and guiding the district to, uh, uh, some interesting times. So I appreciate what you did, uh, by doing that. And, uh, thank you, Dr. Vidal, for being here tonight, and I look forward to working with you. Um, I, I'd want to go back, uh, I'm, on transportation, I just was a little bit confused. I thought, I thought Council Chair asked about savings, I thought you said we only paid 60% and Council Manning just asked you about it, and there was no savings. I'm confused about that.
Uh, what that is in context to is, um, FY20. So if you're looking at this budget sheet, uh, the FY20 numbers is, is the budget. So it, budget versus actual, we don't update the budget to show the actuals until the next year. So what we're talking about is all the open purchase orders that we have to the regular ed, yellow bus, and the special ed folks, uh, we just froze payments at the end of March, so it's settling those payments. Uh, there's a mindset, I was one at one time, that we would pay them zero because they weren't providing any service. However, the directives from the state, and also in talking to the vendors, it's necessary for them to get some cash to keep their operations running. So as I said, we negotiated 60%. So next year, when we look at the 20 budget, which will be in the far-left column, the numbers will be lower, because it'll be reflecting that we spent less because of the COVID-19.
Thank you, and I, and I think that is a difference, because we look at the city side budget, they'll actually show you where we are year-to-date. So that's why I was, I was looking for that number. If, if I could ask you, if you go to page three, uh, where it says, uh, which is staff budget, it says transportation, and it says 1,024,000. Um, so are we suggesting that we paid probably 60% of that, or maybe a little bit more, because it was out of, out of, uh, district and in district? I'm just trying to figure out, with, in not knowing what year-to-date expense, what, what you think it might be.
Um, that has to do, in terms of the summary, um, with the staff budget, is just changeover of staff. I mean, we're keeping, we're maintaining the same number of drivers, same number of monitors, as I said, the crossing guards. Uh, there's been retirements also, so there has been some adjustment to staff. We're not planning any changes to transportation, so it's relative, relatively level funded.
I apologize, I, I didn't mean staff budget, I meant ordinary budget.
Okay, let me get down to that.
And the transportation, yeah. So I have a line on the transportation that you budgeted 3.4 bil- 3.4 million.
Um, yeah, I mean, what it's doing is overall, it's reflecting the increase in the contracts to go from 3.4 to 3.5.
I understand, but my question, what I'm trying to say is, when we do the city budget, they'll say where we are in expenses year-to-date. We don't do it here on the, on this, on the school side, so I'm asking you, are we 40% left, less than that 3.446, or do you know what we are year-to-date? I'm, I'm trying to just kind of grasp and get a number.
Okay, I would just, I think I would have to go back to my answer before, is that the FY20 budget, it's a line in the sand. We started, we said there's a reasonable number, but we're going to spend less than that when the year is done. But next year, we're going to come back and ask for more. That's why, you know, 3.21 is right at 3.5, because the COVID isn't going to, like, hopefully, not going to happen again. So maybe I might not answering your question.
No, you're not, you're not answering it. What I'm asking you is, I understand what you projected for next year. What I'm asking you is, right now, you budgeted 3.4 for 2020, correct?
Correct.
And then you said, Council Chair asked you, did we save any money because of COVID-19?
Yes.
And you said we saved, we paid 60% of our contract.
Approximately, yes.
Approximately our contract, so that's a, so what, I'm trying to understand what we That's a, so what, I'm trying to understand what we saved. Do we, I mean, half of that would have been one point. Six, one point seven million. Are we going to be looking at savings of one point five million, which is about eight percent?
Um, well, there's more in that. I mean, I understand what you're doing. You're following the math, but it's the, the bus comp. Contracts are not that full three point five. There's other services and charges, different things. Yes, we had savings. It was, if it's roughly one point five million, we saved forty percent of that. But those funds, we've already used them. We have holes, sorry, a deficits that needed to be addressed in other areas. So they've been transferred. Out. So yes, it's a savings, but because of the uniqueness of this year, we needed to shift the funds around in order to. You know, close out the fiscal year and not in the deficit.
Okay, okay. What, what, what was it? What was the contract of the transportation company? Let me just ask you that. You know what that is?
Um, well, it's approximately, I would put a number about one point two million if I remember correctly. And uh, yeah, he had a fixed contract and he has a variable on top of that. Uh, for class, uh, student activities, athletics, those are all variables and they get added on.
Okay, uh, mov- moving on, I just wanted to understand. What the thought process and it might be good, it might not be. I I'm not pre- prejudging. I'm just trying to understand. Why did we make the choice to move the custodians to the city side of the budget from the school side? I just want to understand why we're doing that. And that's an open question to. Uh, anyone.
I would defer to the city. I mean, it's my understanding is with contractual changes and the supervisory structure, that it just made more sense, you know, for. The city to have all the facilities and maintenance staff together. That's as far as I'm going to go into the answer, so.
So, um.
This day, Jinger's kind of addressed that at the last meeting. I, but we could defer back to him if that would be helpful to.
I I'd appreciate that. Just, we've gone over a lot. Sometimes I don't remember everything.
And not to belabor the point, but every year when we finish, uh, city charges for the school district. Are reported to us and we process those through the end of the year report. So in a way, where they're budgeted for. Um, really is not going to matter because we're going to take the charge at the end of the year anyway. Not in the budget, in the end of the year report. We're going to report. Thank you.
Councilman McGinn? Yeah, I missed it. Just one moment. Mr. Jinger.
Yes, Council Sashla. A couple, couple of years ago, we um, had to create a facilities department because of uh, building the Higgins Middle School. In order to comply with MSBA. And as part of that, um, we merged the two unions. The the city custodial people with the school custodial and maintenance into one union. And at that point, it becomes um. Important for us to have one facilities department in one location, so we budgeted that on the city side.
And so this is the second piece of it. Is that what you're saying? Now we take in the school people and put them over. That's the second piece?
Right, correct.
And 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 just to carry on, city.
Council Sashla, just, just to, I think there was, there was a delay in the implementation because of the. Uh, correct, because of the untimely passing of. So this had been planned for some time.
And and my only, my next question was, does that affect the chain of command at all when now that the custodians are under the city side? So what I mean by that is if, does the principal of the school have to. Change, she asked something, does she have to call Mr. Haffey? Does she call the custodian who works in the building directly like she probably did before? I'm just curious how the chain of command works and accountability to a degree.
Absolutely remains the same. It's something that the, we've talked about. The principals have a direct relationship. They get along great with the custodians. They're not going to change their assignments. Uh, the director of facilities, Jim Hafie is great to work with. Um, absolutely no change. That was one of our questions when it first started. It's an accounting change.
Sure, I appreciate that.
Council Sashla, before you go, your next question. Dr. Kerbel, did you want to add something?
Just wanted to add in, you know, think, you know, when, when you listen to it. And council was asking about sixty percent of the transportation cost. There was sixty percent of the transportation cost from the middle of March to June, not the whole, not the whole year. And so I'm I'm just bringing that up and I I think I understand what you meant, but when you're talking about it, it sounds like. Um, we, is there an expectation of sixty percent for the whole year? But it's not, it's only for a few months. So. Just a point of view. Sorry.
Thank you, Dr. Council Sashla.
Thank you. And my next question, and I know this is, this really plays into the whole fluidness of the budget, but not only the budget, but the going back to school. I, I believe I had heard on the news today that there was something to the effect that schools now, the state is saying that possibly there'll be no gym. Going forward into the fall and um, in in a situation like that. You talked about sometimes our gym teachers, also our health teachers. Um, is there a concern about how we're going to handle that? If, if, for instance, that person needs that full income. And all of a sudden, they're going to lose point four, point six, point five because they're a health teacher and they're a gym teacher. It's a very difficult situation. I don't envy your position at all, uh, Dr. Vidal going forward. Because I know every week this is changing from the Department of Ed and the governor's office, but I just figured I, while we're here, I just wanted to ask you a question. How you thought that might, because I, you know, I don't want to come up short with people who were supposed to show up and all of a sudden say, found another job. Because this school system is going to have gym or whatever it might be.
I I appreciate that, that question. And so the guidance came out today, uh, preliminary guidance about reopening. Uh, so I sent out a letter this evening to families and we'll be discussing it at the school committee meeting uh, on Tuesday. We will be looking at, you know, what, what the guidance says and how we can reopen and we'll have to be creative. But there are different things. I mean, I think our phys ed and our health teachers do a lot more than just roll it all out at gym class. And there will be opportunities for us to utilize them through mindfulness and wellness. And there are other opportunities. If you can't have gym as it is traditionally situated with games and kids sweating on each other because of transmission. We can reestablish what we do and have appropriate social distancing and have them teach more along the lines of some, some just healthy nutrition. And and there's other standards that they can teach in a short period of time until we get past, uh, you know, some, some of the restrictions. So we we'll have a a full reopening committee and, you know, we are committed that over the course of the entire year, we're going to need health and phys ed teachers. So if there's a small portion where gym looks different, those teachers will still be able to provide instruction to our students. And, you know, I I think it would be very unlikely to see us have a massive reduction in, in, in some of those classes, whether it's band or chorus or phys ed. You know, I think that we would just, it might look a little different, but we will still need that staff to provide instruction to our students.
I thank you, Dr. Dr. Vidal, and also thank you to the entire school committee. I know this time of year was very difficult and you guys put a lot of hours in. And also, Mr. Scanlon, uh, once again, thank you for presenting the report you did tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Council Sashla. Other councilors. Seeing none. Uh, what is the will of the council committee? Uh, I would, at this time, I'd accept the motion to approve the. Fiscal twenty twenty one education budget in amount of seventy four million, eight hundred fifty four thousand, thirty eight dollars.
So move, Mr. President, Mr. Chairman.
Councilors, you've heard the motion from Council Google on the motion. Broke up on the motion, Councilman Manning.
Yes, um, through you to Dr. Kerbel, was this? Budget posted on your school website? For public access? Has the public seen this um, document? Have they seen the budget?
Yes, I guarantee is, we'll have it out there. We actually, I did post last year's budget. I got it restructured so that it is on the website. This, that this one will be posted as soon as possible.
But the proposed budget, when you, when it went, when you had your school committee meetings. Was it the proposed budget posted? For the public, for those meetings?
No, it's not.
So the public has not, hasn't seen any of this? This proposed budget for the schools for twenty twenty one, twenty twenty.
Available as public documents for the meetings. That's all that we've done so far, but we'll post them on the website as soon as it's approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Manning. Council, Council Shrest.
Did, was there a public hearing tonight?
Yes.
In the school budget?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Council Greg Shrest. Seeing nothing else on the motion, roll call.
Council Welton.
Yes.
Sashla.
Yes.
Masoulis.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Manny Martin.
No.
Circo. O'Neil. I see, yes, I see.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Motion carries ten to one.
Thank you, councilors. Uh, we also need to address. Budget for the North Shore Essex Technical School. This time I'd accept the motion to approve. Fiscal twenty twenty one. Yeah, uh, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, you want to make a comment?
I was just going to make the motion.
Yeah, go ahead. Proceed with the motion, Council Rosner.
Make a motion to approve the mayor's approved two thousand twenty one budget for North Shore Essex Tech in the amount of four million. Four hundred and three thousand, one hundred and eighty seven dollars. So move.
Council, you heard the motion, on the motion? Council Kirk, were you rubbing your nose or was that, you want to make a comment?
I was, sir. My apologies, sir. No comments.
Seeing nothing. Roll call.
Council Welton.
Yes.
Sashla.
Yes.
Masoulis.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Manny Martin.
Yes.
Circo. O'Neil. O'Neil. Council O'Neil.
Council O'Neil, yes, you've registered, yes.
Thank you. Council Melville.
Yeah.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Motion carries eleven to zero.
Council, this time I'd entertain a motion adjourned.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Council, you heard the motion from Council Google, roll call.
Council Welton.
Yes.
Sashla.
Yes.
Masoulis.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Manny Martin.
Yes.
Circo. O'Neil.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Motion carries eleven to zero.
Committee is adjourned. Thank you everyone.
One minute and we'll start the regular city council meeting. There's a couple great options here.
Just say, are we ready to go?
But nothing's as good as Treadwell's.
You're learning.
All right, just let me know when we're live. Welcome to the regular city council meeting for Thursday, June 25th. The regular meeting for the purpose of discussion, any and all business via remote participation, in accordance with Chapter 40A of the Massachusetts General Laws and Governor Baker's emergency order dated March 12, 2020. In accordance with the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the governor's March 15, 2020, order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the city council will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. Alternative public access to this meeting shall be provided in the following manner. This meeting is being televised by PBD Access Television. It is being broadcast over the Zoom format, and the minutes are transcribed by our stenographer. If you please now rise for a moment of silence. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands.
Under God.
Move approval of the record from two nights, Mr. President. Two former meetings, rather.
You heard the motion by Counselor Gould.
Meeting, yeah, sorry, the meeting from June 4th and the meeting from June 11th. Sorry, Mr. President.
Gould, to approve special meeting minutes for June 4th as well as the regular meeting minutes from June 11th. Roll call vote.
Counselor Welton?
Yes.
Safla?
Yes.
Masoulis?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Charis?
Yes.
Manny Martin?
Yes.
Turco? O'Neil? O'Neil? Melville?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Rozignol?
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
If there's no objection at this time, I'd like to take Item 7B out of order, where we have the mayor here for various appointments and reappointments. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, good evening, Counsel. Thank you for your work and thank you for letting me address the council now for a couple of appointments. We have three today. The first one is for Mike Gingras as our finance director. He has a kind of a strange term to expire, but it actually expires on May 13th. I wanted to bring him forward for another three-year term. I think all of you have seen the great value that Mike brings to the city of Peabody, particularly during this budget. And we've been very fortunate for the last couple of decades to have two outstanding finance directors. First Patty Schaefer and now Mike Gingras. And I enjoy working with Mike every day and has a real firm grasp of where we're going as a city and what we need to do in terms of finances. So I wanted to ask the city council to approve his three-year term as finance director.
Mr. Chairman?
Counselor McGinn?
Mr. President, and I'm just gonna make a comment before the motion to Mr. Gingras. My wedding anniversary is May 13th, so I'll never forget the expiration of your term.
Yes.
Move to approve the reappointment of Michael Gingras to Bartlett Street, Peabody, Mass, the position of finance director for a three-year term expiring May 13th, 2023, so move.
That's to receive and approve, correct?
Received and approved, correct.
You heard the motion by Counselor McGinn. On the motion? Seeing no discussion, roll call vote.
Counselor Welton?
Yes.
Safla?
Yes.
Masoulis?
Yes.
Gould?
Absolutely, Mike, thank you.
Charis?
Yes.
Danny Martin?
Yes.
Turco? O'Neil? Thumbs up? Thank you. Melville?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Rozignol?
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
Great, thank you. Thank you, and I wanted to bring forth the next appointment to the position of Board of Assessors. As you know, Brian Barrett had served on the Board of Assessors for, I think, the last three or four years. Now he's been brought on board as a member of our legal staff. And I wanted to fill that position with Teresa Reed. Teresa is a Peabody resident. She and her husband live with their family over on Ethel Ave. In Ward 4, she's an attorney, general practice attorney. And also, she's very heavily involved in the Chamber of Commerce. In fact, I think this year she is the president of the board. And she does a terrific job, very active in the community, and I thought she'd be a terrific fit in the Board of Assessors. We have Susan Antonellis and Leslie George, two experienced assessors. And bringing Teresa, I thought, would be an excellent perspective, and I think she'd be a great fit. Wanted to bring her forward for approval on a three-year term to join the board.
Counselor Turco?
Hey, Mr. Chairman, first I just want to say congratulations to Teresa, as I'm confident the appointment will pass. But through you, Mr. President, to the mayor, of those three, who will be the chairman of the Board of Assessors?
The chair, I believe, is Susan Antonellis as the the chair of the, she'll be the chair of the assessors, serving as the director of that department.
Okay, thank you very much, and congratulations again, Teresa.
Counselor Gould?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thrilled to have Teresa on board. She does everything for the community as it is, and she'll squeeze one more title under her belt. Thank you, Teresa.
Any other counselors? I entertain a motion?
Mr. President?
Counselor McGinn?
Move to approve the appointment of Teresa Reed, 6 Ethel Avenue, Peabody, Mass, to the position of Board of Assessors for a three-year term to expire September 6, 2023, so move.
You heard the motion by Counselor McGinn. Roll call vote.
Counselor Welton?
Yes.
Safla?
Yes.
Masoulis?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Charis?
Ward 4, absolutely, yes.
Danny Martin?
Yes.
Turco? O'Neil? Thank you. O'Melville?
Yeah.
McGinn?
Yes.
Rozignol?
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
Mr. Mayor.
Great, thank you, and I did have one more appointment that I wanted to bring forward. This is for the Board of Health, and I first wanted to say and to thank, I think everybody on the council knows Bernie Horowitz. Bernie's been on the Board of Health now for a few years. Prior to that, he was our director of the Health Department and did a terrific job. Oh, he's on this? Oh, terrific. Oh, hello there, Bernie, how are you? So I just wanted to thank him for the hard work, and he's just been such a strong member of our community, has helped in so many different ways. And in fact, we were gonna make this change a few months ago, but when the COVID hit, we had kind of impressed upon Bernie to stay and help us through these few months here as we've worked our way through the COVID-19 worldwide pandemic. And he's just been a terrific member of the board, very hardworking, very reasonable, very compassionate. And I wanted to thank Bernie for his service to the city. And I know there'll be other ways that Bernie's gonna continue to serve the city of Peabody. So I first wanted to thank him for that. Now I wanted to bring forward, and very excited to bring forward, Chief Tony Carley. Chief Carley is the Everett Fire Chief. He and his wife live on Crockmore Road with their families, heavily involved in the community and sports. And I thought he'd be an excellent fit for the Board of Health with his background. Certainly, he's very familiar with the issues that the city of Everett deals with, and in many ways, what the city of Peabody deals with in terms of emergency management, in terms of health issues. And I thought he'd be a terrific fit for the board and to serve with an excellent team that we have with Sharon Cameron and Tom Durkin. The Board of Health, as you know, all of you know, handles a wide variety of issues. Really been tested, of course, with the coronavirus, but handle a wide variety of very difficult issues. And I think Chief Carley will be an excellent addition to the board and provide a great perspective on a number of these difficult issues. So I wanted to move him forward for a three-year approval for a term on the Board of Health.
You heard the recommendation, Counselor Shrest.
Thank you, Counselor President. To Bernie, as a ward counselor, I had to work with him through numerous occasions, certainly with Russell Law and then other issues, as Counselor McGinn can testify. Bernie has been a solid leader in this city with the Board of Health. Certainly going to miss him, but certainly understand that it's time for him to have some time for himself. Bernie, if you're listening, thank you very, very much. You are just a great soundboard to bounce things off. You certainly have a great person with Sharon to work with. But I certainly, again, want to appreciate everything and say thank you for everything you've done for the Board of Health and for Ward 4. Again, thank you, and happy retirement, I guess, from this from this position, because it's not a small position that you were doing. And again, Chief, I'm sure you're gonna step in going full blast, and I appreciate that. And I appreciate it, again, Ward 4, there we go.
Thank you, Counselor Shrest. Counselor Safla? Counselor Safla, you're muted.
Thank you, Counselor President, appreciate that. I also wanted to echo the sentiments of Counselor Charis to Bernie. Bernie, you've done a lot for me over the years also, and I know you've given a lot to the city, and you wear many different hats, whether it be a realtor, a husband, a rabbi, a health board member. So I want to thank you for everything you've done for the city. And I also wanted to welcome Chief Carley. We haven't met yet, but I'm sure we will. But thank you very much, Bernie, I appreciate everything you've done for the city.
Thank you, Counselor Safla. Counselor Turco?
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I wanted to say congratulations to Bernie on her retirement and for a job well done over the last few years. But I also want to say congratulations to Chief Carley. For those of you that don't remember, just a little political history. I first met Tony Carley over a decade ago when he ran for Ward 1, City Council. And that's sometimes forgotten. It was a great race. There was a three-way primary in that race about 10 years ago. And Tony had a lot of good ideas back then. I was so happy to see him last year appointed as chief of the Everett Fire Department. He and his wife Diane are just amazing people. The boys are just great kids within the school system. And I think, Mayor, it's one of your best appointments. I'm so happy to have him on board. Matter of fact, I drove by his house the other day, and I saw a for sale sign. I confused it with the neighbor's house, and I called him immediately. I said, how could we appoint you as on the Health Department, and you're moving? He said, no, that's my neighbor, not me. I said, great news. So anyway, again, Mayor, it's a great job. Thank you, and to Chief Carley, congratulations.
Any further comments from the council? Seeing none, I entertain a motion. Counselor Gould?
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to appoint Chief Carley to the Board of Health per the mayor's recommendation, so move.
You heard the motion by Counselor Gould. Seeing no discussion on the motion, roll call vote.
Counselor Welton?
Yes.
Safla?
Yes.
Masoulis?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Charis?
Yes.
Danny Martin?
Yes.
Turco? O'Neil?
Yes.
Melville?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Rozignol?
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
Thank you, Counselors. We'll now go back to the regular course of business. Next item on the agenda is Item 4A. Counselor Safla?
Thank you, Counselor President.
All right, thanks.
On suspension of rules, vote to receive Item 8K.
You heard the motion by Counselor Safla. Roll call vote.
Counselor Welton?
Yes.
Safla?
Yes.
Masoulis?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Charis?
Yes.
Danny Martin?
Yes.
Turco?
Yes.
O'Neil?
Yes.
Melville? McGinn?
Yes.
Rozignol?
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
Counselor President, Item 8K, Counselor Kelty has requested the continuance of this hearing until July 9th, so move, 2020.
You heard the motion by Counselor Safla to hold this hearing?
To July 9th?
To July 9th. Roll call vote.
Counselor Welton?
Yes.
Safla?
Yes.
Masoulis?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Charis?
Yes.
Danny Martin?
Yes.
Turco?
Yes.
O'Neil?
Yes.
Melville?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Rozignol?
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
Next item on the agenda is reports of committee, finance committee of the whole, counsel McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Finance Committee, sitting as the committee of the whole, met on June 23rd and June 25th to review the fiscal year 2021 budget presented by his honor of the mayor. All 11 counselors were in attendance for the meetings. Meetings were well attended by the mayor, city department head, school administration, and the school board. Comprehensive presentations were made to the committee, and numerous committee questions were addressed by various department representatives that were in attendance. It's clear from these meetings that, given the turmoil associated with the pandemic, there is a great deal of uncertainty associated with the budget. Given these unprecedented dynamics, the city council received a commitment from the mayor to be back before the finance committee in September and in the months leading up to tax classification in December to allow the mayor and the council to assess circumstances and consider if other actions may be required. The outcome of these finance committee meetings were a number of motions that I now bring to the full council for consideration. Mr. President, the first motion, motion for the city council of the city of Peabody to approve and adopt the fiscal year 2021 city of Peabody budget as submitted and further amended by the city council and his honor of the mayor in an amount of $156,994,101 as follows. Total personnel services, $119,780,824. Total operating expenses, $37,213,277, for a total of $156,994,101, so move.
You heard the motion by Counselor McGinn. Seeing no discussion on the motion, roll call vote.
Counselor Welton?
Yes.
Safla?
Yes.
Masoulis?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Charis?
Yes.
Danny Martin? Turco? O'Neil?
Yes.
Melville?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Rozignol?
Yes.
Motion carries 10 to 1.
Counselor McGinn?
Thank you, Mr. President. Finance Committee, sitting as the committee of the whole, also reviewed the budgets associated with the various enterprise funds. And the following motion was made by Counselor Gould, which was supported unanimously. In accordance with the provisions of Section 53F 1/2 of Chapter 44 of Mass. General Law, motion for the city council of the city of Peabody to approve and adopt the fiscal year 2021 water and sewer enterprise budget as submitted by his honor of the mayor in an amount of $15,993,979 as follows. Total personnel services, $3,231,671. Total operating expenses, $12,762,308, for a total of $15,993,979, so move.
You heard the motion by Counselor McGinn. Seeing no discussion on the motion, roll call vote.
Counselor Welton?
Yes.
Safla?
Yes.
Masoulis?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Charis?
Yes.
Danny Martin? Counselor Danny Martin?
Yes.
Turco? O'Neil?
Yes.
Melville?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Rozignol?
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
Counselor McGinn?
Thank you, Mr. President. Next, we addressed the enterprise fund for the McMahon-O'Keefe Memorial Skating Rink. That motion was made by Counselor Gould and was supported unanimously as follows. In accordance with the provisions of Section 53F 1/2 of Chapter 44 of Mass. General Law, motion for the city council of the city of Peabody to approve and adopt the fiscal year 2021 McMahon-O'Keefe Memorial Skating Rink budget as submitted by his honor of the mayor in an amount of $768,000 as follows. Total personnel services, $309,631,979. of the mayor in an amount of $768,000 as follows. Total Personnel Services, $399,629. Total Operating Expenses, $368,371, for a total of $768,000. So moved.
Heard the motion by Council McGinn. Seeing no discussion on the motion, roll call vote.
Councilor Welton.
Yes.
Sashla.
Yes.
Muthulis.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Chaco.
Yes.
O'Neill.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
Council McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. The last motion relates to the enterprise for the PBD Golf Course. That motion was made by you, Mr. President, Council Rozignol, and it was supported unanimously as follows. In accordance with the provisions of Section 53 F and a half of Chapter 44 of Mass General Law, motion for the City Council of the City of PBD to approve and adopt the fiscal 2021 PBD Golf Course Budget as submitted by his honor of the mayor in an amount of $1,089,018. $1,089,018 as follows. Total Personnel Services, $595,792. Total Operating Expenses, $493,226, for a total of $1,089,018. So moved.
Heard the motion by Council McGinn. Seeing no discussion on the motion, roll call vote.
Councilor Welton.
Yes.
Sashla.
Yes.
Muthulis.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Chaco.
Yes.
O'Neill.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
That's the complete.
Council McGinn. I'm sorry?
That's the complete report, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Council McGinn. At this time, we'll move to motions, orders, and resolutions. Council Welton.
Thank you, Council President. Two motions this evening. Bear with me this morning. First, under Section 19-93 of PBD's Code of Ordinances, I'd like to make a motion to restrict parking on the east side of Lynn Street from the corner of MacArthur Road, traveling north to the entrance of the parking lot to the Brown School, and advertise as read. So moved.
Heard the motion by Council Welton. Seeing no discussion on the motion, roll call vote.
Councilor Welton.
Yes.
Sashla.
Yes.
Muthulis.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Chaco.
Yes.
O'Neill.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
Council Welton.
Thank you. I would also like to make a motion for the Department of Public Services to paint the inside of the crosswalk yellow in color, crosswalk location adjacent to 158 Lynn Street for safety concerns. So moved.
Heard the motion by Council Welton, roll call vote.
Councilor Welton.
Yes.
Sashla.
Yes.
Muthulis.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Chaco.
Yes.
O'Neill.
Yes.
Melville.
Yeah.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
Council Welton.
Thank you. Lastly, I would also like to make a motion for the Department of Public Services to paint the inside of the crosswalk yellow in color at the crosswalk location adjacent to 388 Lynnfield Street, again, for safety concerns. So moved.
Heard the motion by Council Welton. Roll call vote.
Councilor Welton.
Yes.
Sashla.
Yes.
Muthulis.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Chaco.
Yes.
O'Neill.
Yes.
Melville.
Yeah.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
Thank you. No further motions, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Welton. Council Sashla.
Thank you, Council President. Under suspension of rules, motion to receive item 9C. But before we vote on it, Council President, through you to the city clerk, I did not know what the banner was for, and I did check both my hard packet and my electronic packet. Can, does anybody know what 9C, what that banner is? I do not see a copy of it.
Are you looking for the name of the organization, Council Sashla?
Well, I see the organization, but I don't know what they're advertising. That was my question, I guess. It said, usually it says, text on display, see attached. I don't see anything attached.
Council, it looks like a production for a show of some sort. Join us for a charming event. Be wicked smart and don't miss it. PBD Mass and Tinky Square Productions welcomes the cast of Charmed.
I don't know if you want to hold, it's not, they don't want to go until Monday, September 14th. Maybe we hold it over to the next meeting, we can get a copy of what it's, what the text, the text display. I don't know what it actually is, the organization. I'm not familiar with it.
We can hold this till our next meeting, which is on the 9th. I don't think that's time sensitive, considering they're looking at putting this out in September and October. So that's fine.
Thank you, Council President. No further.
Council Chaco.
Thank you, Mr. President. Sorry to interrupt you, Council Sashla. I had the same exact question you did, but to add to that, do we know where it's being displayed, actually? I don't see that either.
That is displayed. I'm sorry. It says Central Street or Lowell Street at City Hall. So it does have the location of the banner, at least.
Sorry, the 9C, I just have Aperture Productions, 181 Marlboro Road, Salem. So I didn't see the other piece of it.
Council Sashla, would you like to make the motion to hold this for the July 9th meeting?
Yes, so move. Thank you.
Heard the motion by Council Sashla. Roll call vote.
Councilor Welton.
Yes.
Sashla.
Yes.
Muthulis.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Chaco.
Yes.
O'Neill.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
Council Sashla.
No further motions, resolutions. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Council Muthulis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Under suspension of the rules, I'd like to receive item 8F. Motion to receive and set up a public hearing.
Would you amend that motion to send it to the planning board?
He's asking to. Send it to the planning board. I figured who's coming before us.
It goes to the planning board first, and then comes back to us. Heard the motion by Council Muthulis. Roll call vote.
Councilor Welton.
Yes.
Sashla. Muthulis.
Yes.
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 Charis.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Chaco.
Yes.
O'Neill.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
Council Muthulis.
Yeah, also, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to bundle these communications. They all refer to the meeting we had on 50 and 52 Endicott Street. I'd like to receive item B, C, D, E, I, and J. So moved.
Could you say those letters again, please? I'm sorry. B, C, D, E.
B, C, D, E, I, and J.
Heard the motion by Council Muthulis. On the motion, Council McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to Council Muthulis. D and E, Council Muthulis, would you also prefer those to the construction review, maybe in the planning board?
Yes.
So that, for clarification of that, subset of those is items 8D and 8E. Thank you, Council. Thank you, Council Muthulis.
Right. So moved.
Heard the motion and the amended motion. Seeing no discussion, roll call vote.
Councilor Welton.
Yes.
Sashla.
Yes.
Muthulis.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Chaco.
Yes.
O'Neill.
Yes.
Melville.
Yeah.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
Council Muthulis.
No further motions. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Muthulis. Council Gould.
No motion, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Gould. Council Charis.
Thank you, Council President. Yes, I'd like to make one motion. That any work that's being done on city roads, that a plan of where the materials and work vehicles will be housed during the construction be given to, be given to the, with written permission by the DPW Director or the mayor. So, yeah, so any materials or equipment that is stored on the city property would need written permission by DPW Director or the mayor. So moved.
Heard the motion by Council Charis on the.
I'm sorry, prior to the start of construction.
Heard the motion by Council Charis on the motion. Council Sashla.
Thank you, Council Charis. There is a lot going on in the city. I was just curious. We have some projects that are going on a long time. So the gas line, the water pipeline is going all the way down Lowell Street. So we're not going to be able to get those because those are already underway. As that, I'm just, I'm with you. I'm just trying to understand. Some, we have some projects that are going for months and months, and they've already started. So are we trying to get those under control or future ones?
To, through the chair, obviously, the projects that's already started would be grandfathered in because we didn't have this motion made and adopted prior to that jobs being done. This is going forward. I certainly would hope that the, any contractors that's doing work for the, within the city on city roads and stuff like that would inform the DPW Director, because I believe that's who they're going through, inform them on this type of action. But yeah, this is basically going from anything starting new to a point because I think any construction that's going on now should have been relayed to the DPW Director or the mayor's office. But unfortunately, we wouldn't have had a motion made by then. So this is certainly going forward.
On the motion, Council O'Neill. Council O'Neill, you're muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. Technology's not my friend tonight. Through you, Mr. President, I understand your concern, Council Charis overall. But it's my understanding that any of the projects that take place in the city do go through DPS, and they kind of have oversight. I just don't want to, I guess unnecessarily tie up a project or create administrative work. Would it make sense to have, I guess, Bob La Bossiere, one of his staff members, come in and describe how the process works? We may already have this in place.
Council Charis.
Yes, Council O'Neill, you would, you would hope and think that we would have this process in place. But let me just give you, just put it out there. Today, I had spent many hours with Bob La Bossiere, who's worked very hard on this. But to find out that we had a construction going on within our city, that there was piles of debris, dirt, stone, heavy equipment, hot top piled in front of people's houses for a month without getting the permission of the city or the acknowledgement of DPS, including myself, which within all this, in my ward. It was appalling, and that we don't have, from my understanding, a motion. If there's already, excuse me, a policy to fall back on. So I just want to make it clear that we need to have a policy that these companies who come in need to follow a plan to give DPW or the mayor's office a direction of where they expect to put their equipment and their materials on our city roads, and it doesn't fall flat on somebody's front lawn, if I made myself clear.
Council Sashla.
Thank you. And I echo your sentiments, Council Charis. A perfect example, and this is why we need someone to look at it, is the major construction down by the Lomont and the high school in PBD. What they're doing is they're putting all the vehicles on PBD Road and in the neighborhoods. And I know I saw some comments, you know, why couldn't those vehicles be at the high school? It's out of, they're not in session, they're not in, and there might be a good reason, but really, and we don't even contact the residents. And some of the residents are getting a little bit upset with no, in this day and age of the communication, we should, and we can do a better job. And so I will support the motion. Thank you for bringing it up tonight.
Any, Counselor O'Neill.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just, I think there's two issues. One is that we want to make sure that DPS and our city leaders, Mayor Benton Court, are aware, and we have some kind of teeth in our policy that there's control. But now there's another add-on comment that we've got to tell people where we're putting trucks. I mean, this is all just construction coordination management. Like I said, I just want to make sure the process and our concerns are taken care of, and we're not creating extra work. I don't know how often this has happened before. Maybe it's a one-time thing, and I know you've been dealing with the Council Charis. That's not good. But I just don't want to, you know, hamper DPS. If, if Director La Bossiere said there's an issue with you today saying this needs to be done, then I'm all in favor. But I just can't right now support the motion without having a little bit more like understanding of, like, how does DPS manage this now? Overall?
Council Charis.
Thank you. Through the chair, yeah, Council O'Neill, I understand what your thoughts are. The fact is that there is, from my understanding, there is no direct policy. And when the city councilors get called to say, why is this equipment is being stored somewhere in front of my yard, and it may be a street that very rarely anybody travels except for the people who live on there, and they're starting to think that the city allowed it, and the city had no acknowledgement or understanding that. This gives them information that if a company wants to do, they need to inform the city, and we need to have an understanding that what they're going to be doing, and it's not a free-for-all. Because we have, we have no teeth right now. And I have to give credit to Bob to stepping up today and really doing the right thing with getting the information and moving this stuff. So, hey, you can send it off to committee, you can send it off to anywhere you like, but I think we need to get a grasp on what people are doing on our public streets in front of our constituents' homes.
Council O'Neill.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to, National Grid gets permission from DPS to do any work. There's controls. I guess I'll let it go to the rest of the members if they have comments or they want to vote. But I just think it's a little unclear, and I'd rather have how the process is set up. But I can't support the motion that the way it's structured now. Sorry.
Any further questions by the councilors? Council Manning Martin.
Yes, could you repeat the motion, Council Charis, please?
Sure, I would, I will try to do my best again. The motion is that any work that's being done on city public roads, that a plan is submitted where the construction material and vehicles would be stored. public roads, that a plan is submitted where the construction material and vehicles would be stored in place during the construction process and be prior to the the start of the project submitted to the DPW director or the mayor's office. So move.
Council Sassla.
Council Sherratt, I, I, I hear what Council O'Neil is saying and I, I actually would like to maybe take him up on a suggestion of where it's, we're not going to stop this project that are going on now, but I would like to maybe, it might make sense to hear from, uh, Mr. La Bossiere in person in front of maybe, move it to the Subcommittee of Department of, uh, the Public Safety, ask him to come down and talk about it because Council O'Neil does have a good point as far as, I don't want to duplicate things or burdensome, but if we're going to start this process, I think it would be go, from his perspective, how we'd like to see it done, not so sure the mayor wants to be doing that type of stuff, so I, if, if, if I support your, um, your logic and your thoughts behind it and, uh, I thought maybe we could put it to Subcommittee Public Safety and, um, we could get that on the docket, um, you know, we'll ask to put that up quickly, if, if you, if you'd be comfortable with that and, uh, we send your motion, but that's up to you.
Councilor Turco.
Mr. President, uh, through you to Council Sassla, um, and Council Sassla, would you, did you mean public services? Because there's a public services Subcommittee, um, rather than public safety, I think, um, it would be better served under that committee, but that's your motion, wanted to let you, uh, clarify.
I'm, I'm fine with either one, it doesn't matter to me, just to ask, the more, the intent is to get, uh, Director La Bossiere in front of the council so we can maybe, hash out the details, but either one's fine with me, if you feel it's public services, that's, um, that's fine with me.
Any further questions or comments, Councilor Sherr, Councilor Sherratt.
Yeah, sure, I, I have no problem amending the, uh, motion, is looking to get it done and get it done correctly, so I would amend the motion to put it in public services, uh, Subcommittee, uh, with an ask Bob La Bossiere to attend that meeting to, um, iron out anything that's unclear. I think everyone understands my, my view is that we don't have, uh, large equipment stored on public property. Thank you.
You heard the motion by Councilor Sherratt and the amended motion, any further discussion, seeing none, roll call vote.
Counselor Welton.
Yes.
Sassla.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Manny Martin.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
O'Neil.
Yes.
Melville.
Yeah.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Motion carries, ten to zero.
Council Sherratt.
Thank you, and I just have one acknowledgement, uh, so far, so proud to, uh, to make this announcement of a, uh, award for resident, that Cheryl Malad was nominated by our great Senator Joan Lovely to the Massachusetts Commission on Statue of Women and Unseen Harrows of Award. Most of us, if not all of us, have a, um, a, a, a great connection with Cheryl and all the work she's done here in the city over the past forty years, and again, just another way to recognize one of our great citizens on the work that she's done on behalf of the Peabody and being recognized by, uh, a, a great Senator. Just want that to be acknowledged that, um, here in Peabody, it's, it's, it's a great honor for her to be acknowledged for the North Shore, so move.
Thank you, Council Sherratt.
And only one other thing, I just want to wish, um, um, uh, Councilor Melville a happy fortieth birthday and hope he enjoys the rest of the evening, so move.
Forty, huh? Give you five years, thirty-five.
I'm, I'm sorry, Council Melville, thirty-five, I misspoke, sorry.
Thank you, Council Sherratt, Council Manning Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to request, uh, a copy of the agreement from the mall and the city regarding their agreed abatement that they entered into before the COVID-19, so move.
You heard the motion by Council Manning Martin, seeing no discussion on the motion, roll call vote.
Counselor Welton.
Yes.
Sassla.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Manny Martin.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
O'Neil.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Motion carries, ten to zero.
Council Manning Martin.
Thank you, and, um, I'm not sure if we'll be able to squeeze in a Subcommittee with the amount of time we have left, so I'll defer to you, Counselor Rozignol, and we have two scholarships, uh, for high school students, uh, that, one for male, one for female, that I'm reaching out to the high school principal now to, um, to select those individuals for the, for college students, uh, high school students that are going to college for, police, fire, safety, or, um, mental health, social services for the city councils' public service scholarship, uh, that we raise with the, uh, Dan Pimenta fundraising for the drug foundation. Uh, so if we have time to schedule a quick one to do that, or I'll defer to you if you want me to do it at the Committee of the Whole, if it's faster, well, you know, just with, with time constraints, it's up to you.
I have, I, I believe we'll be able to have a Subcommittee meeting, uh, before our next meeting, which is the ninth. The only other one that we're going to have to have is, um, aggregate, but I think both of them will be relatively quick, so I think we'll be able to schedule them kind of back-to-back before our, our last meeting before break.
Great, if, if that's possible, I'll schedule one, manage very quick, just to enter the names in for a vote, and then we roll it out at the Committee in the whole, thank you, Chairman. And lastly, uh, motion of the rules, motion to, uh, receive item seven A, the letter from the mayor regarding cancellation of Wood Four parties, summer concert series, summer fireworks, international festival. I know it was touched upon at Tuesday night's meeting, I think Council Sassla noted that, um, he was happy, um, and I share that feeling, as I'm sure the, the rest of the council does, that the mayor has, um, included the Fourth of July parties in next year's budget, uh, because it's, it's such important celebrations. And, um, so I, I was a little disheartened that they were canceled, I had hoped that we might have been able to do some social distancing and some personal responsibility and, you know, maybe cut out the kids' games or whatever, even have a flag raising or something. So, um, and, uh, and I, I, the mayor and I have been playing phone tag to discuss something like that, but, um, we haven't been able to, uh, connect, unfortunately, he's going to be busy with the budget and lots of other things, so, uh, th- those were my thoughts on that, um, but I am glad that we'll be, um, back to normal next year, because all I can think of is, um, Counselor Bob Driscoll, when he's, uh, does the pledge of allegiance and his, and his little dance around the, the little kids around Blackpool at, um, Emerson Park, I think of him often when, there was a time, some time ago, um, I don't think any of you are on the council at the time, but there, there was talk of canceling the, the Fourth of July or, or making, uh, joining wards, uh, it would always rear its head every once in a while, and Bob Driscoll would always beat it right back down because he said, absolutely not, I'll never vote to cancel those Fourth of July parties, but he, he said in his ward, there are so many children that look forward to that day, uh, they don't have the means, their family doesn't have the means to go to the Cape or go camping, and they look forward to that day every year, so I'll never forget that, uh, that, um, Bob's stance on that, so I just wanted to, um, remark that I'm glad that we're going to focus on, on getting them back next year, um, glad that it's back, it's still in the budget, so those are my remarks, thank you.
You heard the motion to receive item seven A, on the motion, Councilor Turco.
Thank you, Mr. President, I'm through you to Council Manning, and if, if, if Council Manning can't answer it, then maybe Council McGinn can. Uh, I was confused by that allotment for the twelve thousand dollars, because the twelve thousand dollars is in the fiscal year two thousand twenty-one budget, and July fourth would be after July first, obviously, so do, do you allot the money for this July fourth? Or is it next July fourth? I'm confused, um, July fourth would be this year, obviously, in this fiscal budget, so through you to Council Manning.
Well, I believe we funded for it, uh, in our current budget that we're in right now, um, I believe, and, um, so it's been, I think.
Yes, because the checks are cut prior to the end of June for the ward councilors, so yes, you're paying for the following, um, Fourth of July, so two thousand twenty's funds are actually for July two thousand twenty-one budget, if that makes sense, Council Sassla.
Yeah, if I could help you, usually what happens, uh, and how quickly you forget, Council Turco, we get checks like in April, May. So, we usually get them in April and May, right, Council McGinn? So I think that's why, but you, you almost had me there on the usually get it in April, I think, so it gives a little bit of time to need to do.
Wait, councilors get checks? Get money?
All right.
Mr. President, so, so the ward council have already received the two thousand dollars for this year?
They have not.
They have got it, and will the ward councilers receive a check for this July fourth to do anything for the kids? Okay, thank you very much, that's all, but, thank you.
Council McGinn, did you have anything to add? You're muted, Council McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President, I, I just, I, um, Council Manning Martin kind of described the letter, and I think people might, that might be listening, got the gist of it, but I, I think, um, Mr. President, maybe we should just read this into the record so it's clear, um, because some people might be finding out by way of this letter, the specifics of some cancellations, so, um, yeah, it's perhaps-
Would you like to do that, or would you like me to?
I, I perhaps have to receive, uh, Mr. President, since it was directed specifically to you, you could read it into the record.
Dear Council President Rozignol and Honorable Members, unfortunately, the city has decided to cancel all summer community events, including the Wood July Fourth Parties, Summer Concert Series, Summer Fireworks Spectacular, and the International Festival. I'm bitterly disappointed that we have had to make this decision because these events are cherished traditions here in Peabody, and our residents look forward to them each year, however, given the ongoing public health emergency, I believe that this is the right decision to protect the health and safety of our residents. Although the COVID-19 pandemic has upended civic life and forced us to cancel these beloved community events, we look forward to resuming them next year, bigger and better than ever. Thank you for ongoing commitment to Peabody, warmest regards, Edward A. Bettencourt Jr., Mayor, City of Peabody. Any further discussion on the motion to receive item seven A, seeing none, roll call vote.
Counselor Welton.
Yes.
Sassla.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Manny Martin.
Yes.
Turco. Turco?
Yes.
O'Neil.
Yes.
Melville.
Yeah.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Motion carries, ten to zero.
Council Martin.
No further motions, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Council Turco.
Thank you, Mr. President, um, first, I just, I wanted to recognize today that, uh, the Salem Country Club issued their yearly scholarships, I, I wish I had known about it, but I found out after the fact that the three Peabody High School students that were awarded those scholarships at the country club today were Brendan Mills, Amanda Stanton, and Kelly Mullane, uh, Brendan and, and Amanda were sole school students, um, and Kelly Mullane was a Carroll School student, uh, just graduated this year. There were also three Bishop Fenwick students awarded scholarships, and I unfortunately don't have their names, but I, I wanted to say congratulations on receiving the Joseph O'Boyle Memorial Fund Scholarship to, to those students. Motions. Move, Mr. President, move to receive, um, item eight A. And I will read, I will read that after we receive.
You heard the motion by Council Turco, seeing no discussion on the motion, roll call vote.
Counselor Welton.
Yes.
Sassla.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Manny Martin.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
O'Neil.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Motion carries, ten to zero.
Council Turco.
Thank you, Mr. President, so this memo is from the, uh, Health Department, mainly in regards to block parties in the, um, for the, for the public's knowledge, the, uh, Health Department feels that, uh, block parties would be, be fall under, uh, street festivals, which would be part of the Phase Four reopening, and an approximate, but yet unknown date would be around July twentieth of that. So I did notice that the block party applications are no longer on the city website, and I was wondering if maybe we could put those back on so that, um, there are some people that would like to plan ahead for August, um, graduation parties and such. We can get, at least get the application on, um, so people can get started, because it does take a little while to fill out those applications. Mr. President?
One note as far as, um, the directive or the recommendation from, um, Ms. Sharon Cameron was, um, she would not recommend us to act on anything prior to the date so that people aren't confused, and her rationale is, um, similar to the reopening, where it could be either pushed back or pushed ahead to have a concrete date on it, or have us act on it before it's actually getting ready to be implemented. The one thing that she would not want, or, and, and I, and I kind of follow her, her thinking in this manner, is, uh, somebody to go through the process expecting it to be up and available on the, I think it's August fourth right now, but then that date either be pushed up to July twenty-third, I'm just making up a date, or pushed back to, let's say, October, and meanwhile, you have a resident that's really gung-ho on having their party on August fourth, but now they can't because Phase Four has been pushed back to October something or other. So, uh, I understand your sentiment about putting it back on the website. Me personally, I'd be a little bit leery of that until we're a little closer to that finality of Stage Four beginning, just my two cents.
Well, yeah, I, I appreciate that, uh, that thought, and, and the only thing that makes me think differently is what they just did with, uh, the Phase, Section Two of Phase Two where
Sure, they moved it up.
Ra- restaurants five days to, uh, to plan for inside seating, so I, I wanted to give residents, um, a little bit more chance to, to fill out their applications and get their signatures done, but, um, if the clerk doesn't feel so, or you don't feel so, then I guess we don't have to do that, but maybe we could put a memo on the website under, uh, block parties where it's just contact clerk's office, uh, possible reopening in Phase Four or, um,
Should they contact the clerk's office, or should they contact, um, Sharon Cameron and the Health Department's office? That's the only question I have with that, because the memo did come from Sharon Cameron, the Director of Human Services, and that's kind of what's dictating, um, when things are starting to open on a city level, which is obviously dictated by the state, so I'm, I'm just wondering if, if, if questions should actually go through her office as opposed to the city clerk. Council Turco.
Uh, Council Gould, I'll defer to you in one second, I see you trying to ask, but Council Rozignol, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't do that, a Councilor, um, uh, excuse me, Sharon Cameron has never voted on our block parties or, or had any say in our block parties, and the last thing I want to do is add more work to her, when she tells us that it's okay to approve them, I, I can get that she could make one phone call to you as City Council President and let you know that it's okay to approve them, but I don't want her to, to wind up with a hundred phone calls about block parties, so, you know, I'd prefer that we just post something on the website that says, you know, please contact the clerk's office or, uh, all block parties are, are on hold until Phase Four, something to that effect.
Okay, Council Gould.
Thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Council Turco, you worked it out yourself, you figured it out, uh, because as you said, Director Cameron has enough to, uh, on her plate right now, and I, I think if we keep it off the website, but give a note that until further notice, applications are on hold, I think we'll be in good shape. Thank you.
Fair enough.
I don't need a motion. I don't need a motion for that, uh, Mr. President. We can just move forward. Uh, move to receive item eight G.
You heard the motion by Counsel Turco. Seeing no discussion on the motion, roll call vote.
Counselor Welton?
Sorry, Mr. President. Mr. President, I'm sorry.
Counsel Gould?
Sorry about that. Uh, you were pretty quick on that. I apologize. Just a, just a quick note on, on that, uh, program that the Community Development, they had 110 applicants and gave out a total of $552,000 to companies that probably, uh, were gonna go out of business if it wasn't for those, you know, two months' rent that they were able to pay with $3,500. So, uh, I, I really would like to commend the Community Development Authority for a job well done. Think about that. They gave out $552,000 to 110 companies. So hats off to them. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Gould. Counsel Sashla.
To follow, just to follow up on that, Counsel Gould, I think they doubled the amount that they were just gonna give. So I give them a lot of credit. And they also, I did have a brief question with, um, conversation with, um, Director Bellovance. I applaud them because he did tell me that they did, you know, they asked a question. They, they did not give out the money unless they got a commitment that the business was gonna stay in business for, it was sixty days. So they did their due diligence also and do, given the money. So I applaud them as well. And it's a good, it's a, it's a good story to tell at times. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Counselor Welton?
Yes.
Sashla?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Charis?
Yes.
Manny Martin?
Yes.
Turco?
Yes.
O'Neil?
Yes.
Melville?
Yeah.
McGinn?
Yes.
Rozignol?
Yes.
Motion carries ten to zero.
Counsel Turco.
As I move to receive, um, and approve all papers being in order, item nine A, uh, taxi driver license, Scott Boyle, 21B, Whitmore Street, Gloucester, Howard Bed, 45 Franklin Street, PVD. So moved.
You heard the motion by Counsel Turco. Seeing no discussion on the motion, roll call vote.
Counselor Welton?
Yes.
Sashla?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Charis?
Yes.
Manny Martin?
Yes.
Turco?
Yes.
O'Neil?
Yes.
Melville?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Rozignol?
Yes.
Motion carries ten to zero.
Counsel Turco.
As I move to receive and approve all papers being in order, item nine B, Class Two Motor Vehicle License Renewal for 2020, North Shore Auto Sales, 218 Newbury Street. So moved.
You heard the motion by Counsel Turco. Seeing no discussion on the motion, roll call vote.
Counselor Welton?
Yes.
Sashla?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Charis?
Yes.
Manny Martin?
Yes.
Turco?
Yes.
O'Neil?
Yes.
Melville?
Yeah.
McGinn?
Yes.
Rozignol?
Yes.
Motion carries ten to zero.
Counsel Turco.
Last item, Mr. President, I've just threw you to the clerk. Could we set up a, um, Public Services Subcommittee meeting, maybe fifteen minutes with Mr. La Bossier? I know that, uh, Counsel Manning mentioned, um, the shortage of time. Uh, whether we do that on July 9th, and I, I know that there's talk of possibly a special meeting, um, one of those two meetings. Uh, could we do a subcommittee for fifteen minutes prior to?
Yes.
Okay, and that would be to discuss, uh, Counsel Shurfs' motions and any other, uh, items, uh, from the council.
Any further motions, Counsel Turco?
I'm all set, Mr. President. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counsel O'Neil.
Thanks, Mr. President. Under suspension, the rules move to accept, uh, item eight H. So moved.
You heard the motion by Counsel O'Neil. Seeing no discussion on the motion, roll call vote.
Counselor Welton?
Yes.
Sashla?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Charis?
Yes.
Manny Martin?
Yes.
Turco?
Yes.
O'Neil?
Yes.
Roz, Melville? McGinn?
Yes.
Rozignol?
Yes.
Motion carries ten to zero.
Counsel O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. President. I probably should have commented that that was a, uh, communication from the Community Development and Plan Department regarding a, um, the site plan review being approved by the Planning Board for the Winona Water Treatment Plant, which is exciting. They'll be working on getting that, uh, completely renovated and improved, uh, in short time. Uh, I have no other, uh, motions tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel O'Neil. Counsel Melville?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I just wanted to say, um, kudos to, uh, these, the process that we put in place for the outdoor dining. Um, talked to some restaurants of, and I've talked to some folks on the side. They've really expedited it, and they're trying to help as many of these restaurants as they can. Um, sometimes it gets a little bit complicated for some of these issues, but they're, uh, being responsive. So I just want to give kudos. I have no motions this evening. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Melville. Counsel McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, we've got a late communication that I would move to receive from the School Department with regard to, ceremonies at the Higgins Middle School and, uh, at the, I guess they both, they both have to do with ceremonies taking place at the Higgins Middle School. So moved.
You heard the motion by Counsel McGinn. Roll call vote.
Counselor Welton?
Yes.
Sashla?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Charis?
Yes.
Manny Martin?
Yes.
Turco? O'Neil?
Yes.
Melville?
Yeah.
McGinn?
Yes.
Rozignol?
Yes.
Motion carries ten to zero.
Counsel McGinn.
Yeah, um, thank you, Mr. President. So just, uh, clarification on that. They, one, one had to do with the, uh, senior events at the high school, and the balance of the information was with respect to events at the Higgins School, that are now all in possession of the council. Thank you, Mr. President. No further motions.
Thank you, Counsel McGinn. Uh, I just have a couple of housekeeping issues that I'd like to address at this moment. Um, first, uh, please return the, um, $50, um, for the, or please donate the $50 for the scholarship, um, to the city clerk's office, um, sometime within the next week if you haven't already done so. Please also return the MWRA sheet, um, signed, uh, by next week if possible. Another, um, item that, uh, I'm gonna bring up at this time is, we're gonna have a special meeting next Thursday, and there's gonna be a presentation by, by the city clerk's office. In attendance will be the city council, the, um, Board of Voter Registers, and the mayor. And the topic is going to be, um, elections and polling places. Um, as you know, we're in unprecedented ti- unprecedented times right now regarding COVID. Some of the places that we currently have, um, ads polling places aren't acceptable with the new guidelines put forth by the state. Um, so there's going to be some changes regarding polling places, and we need to kind of get this handled as soon as possible, um, going into obviously September and election season. So, uh, that presentation is going to be next Thursday, um, July 2nd, and that'll be, um, sent out tomorrow. Another thing that I just wanted every, the council to be aware of, we start break on the ninth.
Mr. President, what time, Mr. President, sorry to bother you. What time is the meeting next Thursday?
It'll be at six o'clock.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Um,
Thank you.
Lastly, some, uh, according to council rules, our, our break starts, um, after our next meeting, which is on the ninth. Um, throughout this whole process, I've been trying to keep things as normal as possible. Um, the president does have the availability to hold special meetings, um, during our break. I just wanted the council to be aware, the only way that I would really hold a special meeting would be regarding, um, voting. If we don't hash everything else that we need to come next Thursday, finance, in case anything changes, which, as we all know, this year, that could be entirely possible. And last would be anything that the council needs to do with regards to reopening, such as we did, as Counsel Melville mentioned earlier, regarding, um, open air dining. That's something that we, we had to act on, had to act on quickly, just to kind of get ahead of the curve. So if there's any one of those three issues that, um, may arise during our break, then that would be a reason that I would anticipate us needing to have a special meeting. Um, so I just wanted the council to be aware of those few housekeeping items. Um, at that, I have no motions, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn, Mr. President.
You heard the motion by Counsel McGinn. Roll call vote.
Counselor Welton?
Yes.
Sashla?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Charis?
Yes.
Manny Martin?
Yes.
Turco? O'Neil?
Yes.
Melville?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Rozignol?
Yes.
Motion carries ten to zero.
Thank you, Counsel.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, everybody. Happy birthday, Ryan.